The study session, item eight, time has been set aside for discussion of the 311 customer service portal. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm actually gonna start this conversation up if you want to get into more detail or have more conversation, then I've got some staff that can help with this. So I'm going to, I think the easiest way to do this is to maybe put up a slide, Mayor. Make sure I've got it here. And what it does is it shows the, and I'm gonna use the term triage, but it really shows the pattern. This was included in your packet. And just to kind of start the conversation on a bigger scale, I see that there's two extremes for calls for service. You have on one end of the scenario or one end of the spectrum, 911. So threat to life or property, you pick up the phone, you call 911, and you go down that path and we dispatch public safety personnel to address your need. On the other extreme, it's people that are in need of information, maybe service, but not necessarily emergency service. And so that is what we refer to as the 311. And the 311 is again more informational, but service as well. You have a situation where a work order needs to be established and some type of service needs to be implemented by the city or by others. But then you have this area in the middle, and what I'm gonna do is refer to it as the Tucson Cares line, that piece in the middle that I think is where I'd like to spend our time today. So for example, and if you go back up to the slide that I have on the screen there, we'll start on the 911 side. So someone calls 911, the first question is, or decision tree piece of that is, is there a threat to life or property? If the answer is no, then it goes into what we'll call is it a, it needs another type of service. And so that's the conversation around is a behavioral crisis, a social issue, or some type of service. So I want to stay focused on the behavioral and the social issue. And in my memorandum, I'd given you a link to the 211 piece, and I won't spend a lot of time on that, but I did want to just outline for you that the 211 is a state-sponsored service line. It's run by the Crisis Network, Inc. And it's basically there to help people connect with state and local services for food, housing, utility payments, et cetera. And so that's an opportunity that I want to shelf for just a minute, but not forget about it. But then there's also the piece that's the behavioral, which is the Arizona Complete Health, that model. And we do have a partnership with them. They do have some clinicians that are available to us, and we're able to then utilize them to help us with this conversation. If you drop down to the 311, very similar. You know, the call comes in, again, call for service. And by the way, the 311 is available, but it is not operational, as we do not have operators for that. And appreciate the partnership with Pima County. They did, were assigned the 311 number, and we've asked them to share that, if you will, with us. And so we're going to be working closely with them on some logistics of making it happen. But in the future, you call 311, first question is, is it a life-threatening situation? If it is, then it's immediately transferred to 911. If it's not, then we go through the same basic effort of deciding, you know, what type of need is it? And how do we then push that customer, that client, to the appropriate service level? So again, the piece that's important here is we're trying to make sure that we provide the appropriate level of response for that call for service. We don't overrespond with public safety if that's not necessary, and we can triage it. But also, we're trying to take some of the burden, if you will, some of the call load off of 911 to give us an opportunity to make sure we're spending adequate time. Because if we have situations where the 911 operators and call takers are so overwhelmed and burdened by non-emergent calls, then that obviously is taken away from those that really and truly need the service of the 911 system. The other piece to that, Mayor and City Council, is that, you know, keep in mind the, we oftentimes look at, we'll call it the way that service is provided by either our public safety folks or any of these other providers. But the first line of defense, if you will, the first piece, the first interaction is with that call taker, with that 911 dispatch center. And so it's extremely important that we have them well-trained, we have them, you know, very up-to-date, if you will, on all of this that we're outlining for you here. So one of the things, Mayor, is a part of the Community Safety Pilot Program that the council has given direction on moving, was to really study this and how we take advantage of, at that time, we were calling it a 311 system, but that's a portion of this, a part of this. If you really think of it, and we can call it whatever, I think, Mayor, you had suggested, maybe the Tucson Cares line. You know, I think that's a very appropriate type of, because it encapsulates it. It really encapsulates what we're trying to do, which is, you know, take the services that are needed and put them to the resources. And so when you look at the 211, not everything would fall into the 211 piece, but there could be pieces of what we take now that we would transfer to 211. Same thing with the behavioral side. There are, we already have our MIST team, our mobile crisis team, and we've already got some of that infrastructure in place. What I've challenged the staff to do is really think about that middle area, that Tucson Cares line, that middle area that will, I'll use the term "formalize" and potentially expand. TC3, MIST, the mobile crisis teams, you know, our relationships with the nonprofit or the service providers, our understanding and utilization of the 211 system. So that we can truly, as those calls come in, we can then distribute them to a variety of different areas to provide resource and provide service for those customers that come in. The ultimate goal, as I mentioned earlier, is twofold. One, I want to make sure that we are providing adequate time for our 911 operators and call takers to truly digest what's going on and be able to route those calls by reducing the number of calls that actually go to them. But the other is, we want to focus on, again, the appropriate service level that's necessary on those calls so that we're not overreacting or underreacting. You know, we don't want to put ourselves in a position where we should have sent one group and we sent a different group. I mean, that's obviously as bad as overreacting as well. So Mayor, I've given you all of that I just outlined for you in my memorandum. It's dated today. It's got today's date. And I'm happy to answer questions from you and the City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I just wanted to make sure that we talked a little bit about the intent of this customer service portal in the context of the Community Safety Pilot Program, of the framework that we have. This concept of having a 311 system in the city of Tucson is not new. But how we put it to work is an important piece of the Community Safety Pilot Program. Just so that we are clear, having, you know, the description of the 311 system is really not up and running. People cannot pick up the phone and call 311. But the intent of making it part of the Community Safety Pilot Program is these partnerships that the city manager has defined for us, the crisis line, the 211 system for social needs, social service issues, and of course, the behavioral health issues with the crisis line. The way that we envision it, and I envision it, is having a very similar process as the TC3 program that the Tucson Fire Department partners with a Tucson Medical Center, but with an expanded model of service, as it has been described and explained by the city manager. So I imagine that this is a work in progress and having this need and making sure that we're defining it, we're making it part of the the Community Safety Pilot Program, and that we have an action plan to put it to work. Because this diversion, the diversion of these calls to other departments and other areas where these calls could be taken is very important to diminish the the use of police officers or firefighters where they shouldn't go. Right? Because right now, I have heard that some people call 911 to get a ride to their doctor's office. I have heard that some people call 911 if they're depressed and they need someone to talk with. Others call 911 when they are having a real behavioral crisis. And we shouldn't put it on the backs and the shoulders of police officers or firefighters. If we do connect the social worker piece or behavioral health experts piece to it, if there are ways of deferring those calls to those that could actually provide the service where people are calling about, even if it's, hey, I don't know where to pay my water bill, that piece, then we have to make sure that we are being smarter of how we're providing information and service to our community. So I just wanted to make sure that I put it in the context of that entire conversation and why it's important to to stand up and organize this piece as part of the Community Safety Pilot Program. With that, I open it up for discussion for my colleagues on the council. Any questions or input?
Mayor, as you're waiting for feedback, one of the things that I will probably do in the future is, because the 311 is but one piece of this, I'm really gonna focus this on the customer service portal, which then gives us an opportunity to really distinguish, because 311 is a piece. That customer service portal is the, is the, is the, kind of the overarching conversation. And that's why I included that in the memo the way I did. So when you see this in the future, you may not see it referred to as 311, not to just change the name, but to really focus in on the piece that I think is exactly what you just outlined with regard to the Community Safety Pilot.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I do see the Vice Mayor hands up, and then Councilmember Santa Cruz. Vice Mayor?
The bottom line is, and for everybody that is following along, the whole seven people following our stream, just understand that this is a big piece into a national conversation that's going on right now. And the bottom line is, this allows us wraparound crisis intervention, wraparound immediate service response. And those tools, the mechanisms to make the tools we want to exist until we have these programs up and running and work cooperative. So it's a lift, it's a heavy lift, but it's a lift that this council is willing to make. And a lot of the mayor, the manager, on their efforts to make the, to make this effort happen and move the ball, keep moving it forward. So you've got us supported. Let us know what you need, manager, as you put your team together. Again, I know this is all gonna be part of the CSP, which the mayor's been working on for for almost four or five months now. So I think it'll be pretty exciting when the final product is rolled out.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Santa Cruz?
I was just wondering if at this time, we had an idea of what the cost is gonna be and the funding? Yeah, a stream that we're thinking of? And then when we launch it, and we can think of any marketing agencies or staff that need to be formalized, you know, like the use of this.
Councilmember Santa Cruz, we lost you a little bit. For some reason, you sounded muffled.
Do I still sound muffled?
No, you're better. No, you're better. Okay, that yeah that I'm just wondering about if we have an idea
of the the costs I know that city manager and the council has been talking about this for a number of years now but now you know it's we're thinking about it a little differently and so I'm just wondering about the cost and the funding stream for it and then what is our timeframe for launching and will we be working with like an education campaign to the public to make them aware?
Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor and Councilmember Santa Cruz so there's multiple parts to the cost so when we first started the conversation a few years ago now on the 311 we were envisioning as a facility as a call center if you will and so what we found is that because of the pandemic and because of our ability quite frankly to utilize technology to route calls and call centers etc that all of a sudden it just changes the chemistry of the approach and it changes the chemistry of the dollars so I no longer need if you will a a bank of of call takers in one spot to deal with some of the the we'll call it the customer service portal 311 however one of the items that I had that is very very important as we move this forward is making sure that we stay on track for our 911 retrofit and so on the agenda tonight it's item 14 is our financial update one of the pieces of that I was hoping to get direction from the council was to allocate general fund dollars to move that forward I sent you a note that basically said I wasn't I was no longer asking for that this meeting because of the of the situation on getting the packet and the info so that's one piece the other pieces I think will come back to you so for example you had allocated eight social workers as a part of I'll use the term social worker slash clinician interchangeable as a part of the budget once we have the framework put together I may come back to you and say okay here's the way these are going to work these types of positions are needed in and then you know pick at these these specific areas ultimately I can move I can move some of the resources around internally but others we're going to need to to allocate additional resource for the effort so as time goes on I'll be able to hone in on on what that's going to look like into a more specific ask right now I think we've got to just keep pushing on that 911 retrofit project which is ready to go keep pushing on our relationships with the service providers but also with an eye towards what we need internally to shore those services up council member
Do you have a timeframe for all of this city manager?
Mayor, I apologize you did ask me that so yes we're already doing it in some of these areas like I said the mobile crisis teams are already launched I do have some folks that are on the line if you need to ask questions about that the expansion I would say within the next 60 days I'll be able to give you more specific in terms of what those look like but keep in mind we're not waiting for 60 days to implement we're already doing all that was listed in my memo the miss teams already up and running the clinicians working closely with not only TPD but also our public safety communications folks are already up and running what I'm really looking for in the short term is an expansion of that and I'm hoping that we can bring something back to you within 60 days for that
Thank you I absolutely agree with you, Mr. Manager, that we really need to put the pedal to the metal on the 911 system and the training in the 911 system and then of course the 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 space that is necessary for our call takers and our dispatchers to to be safe and so absolutely agree that we need to move quickly on on the 911 communication center retrofit also we have to keep in mind that that we'll call it you know the Tucson cares line or customer service portal however we want to call it I think Tucson cares is better but we we really have to make sure that we make it part of a holistic approach to providing customer community safety to our community and put all of the pieces of the of the community safety pilot program together with this particular service to the community being part of how we rethink how we provide safety and wellness to our if there are no other comments
Mayor, Mayor I apologize and I'm sorry for some reason my my hand raising function isn't working so it doesn't work so I have to blurt out council member Santa Cruz also asked about education and so forth that is part of the effort is to really make sure that once we and they'll happen in parallel but once we have a we'll call it a framework to truly move the conversation Tucson cares line forward we will start on a very very aggressive campaign in terms of education I think in in previous generations 911 was the go-to and you saw a lot of a lot of energy and effort put towards that we've now got to and I'll use the term undo some of that and make sure that people know 911 is not to call when you need a ride to the doctor you know or some of the other service requests that we get through 911 so that's all part of it council member I just wanted to make sure I responded to that
Thank you with that we can move on to item nine item nine is we need a motion to endorse the recommendations to the PAG executive director and so I open also open it up for comments or questions any there? Mr. Manager?
Adam?
Yes?
Mayor?
Councilmember Fimidis?
How will the mayor and council have input on the tip project list for 2022 and 2026 you know?
Sure, Mayor and I know Diana Arcon's on the on the call so there is a process for that we do provide feedback and input keep in mind that a big part of not only the PAG projects but also the RTA projects that are future if you will are a function of our move Tucson mobility master plan which the staff has been working on so once that's complete within the next I believe it's in November by the end of November that process should be complete it gives the council an opportunity to weigh in as well as providing an opportunity for us to put this to the PAG and RTA folks Diana did I miss anything?
I just one thing to add if I could, Mr. City Manager, is that we will be sending out a memo this week with some suggested projects for the next RTA because we are following the city ordinance as part of our complete street initiative and taking it to the coordinating council so that is actually the coordinating council is meeting on Thursday so we'll have that out to y'all tomorrow and then we'll work it through the coordinating councils and then back to them and then we plan on bringing the move Tucson RTA next projects the first meeting in November to mayor council for consideration before we move it forward to meet our November 30th deadline and just to add to it there is the tip is actually based on the R map which is reviewed every four years and in the next two years will be coming up so we'll be able to take our move Tucson initiative and add it to the R map and make sure that that's being implemented as part of the tip as we move forward with our transportation initiatives as a city. Thank you, sir.
Can you Diana give us an update on the herb revenues collected by the state that will go through this our city? Your Michael?
Mayor, Mayor Diana, Councilor Fimidis, we're going to discuss that in some detail during the financial update if you're okay with that I'd like to just wait it goes together with the presentation that we've got for you under the financial update if that's okay?
That's fine, okay. You need a motion, Madam Mayor?
Yes, I do need a motion to endorse the recommendations to the PAG executive director.
Go move.
There is a motion and a second I believe Steve has his hand up and I don't know if the vice mayor put his hand up or is just giving me the thumbs up?
I was seconding it, Your Honor, but I just was trying not to I just couldn't find the unmute button.
Alrighty, so there's a motion I believe council member Santa Cruz seconded the motion and Steve has a question.
I just want to clarify Diana that by acting on this right now it does not end our input as far as project lists are concerned and priorities.
Um, Madam Mayor and council members no sir councilman goes with your name sorry it will not have a problem we will not have any issues with being able to provide input to any of our projects as a matter of fact we will one of the ask is that because we really will have moved Tucson completed in the spring and we'll want to revisit it at that time once we're 100% through move Tucson so we're actually including that as part of our recommendation.
And so how does what we're doing tonight today affect the RTA's project list for going to the ballot and if we're if we're talking about coming back to them in the spring anyway?
It 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 actually doesn't what what this does is it's allowing the recommendation of continuing to move it forward our projects are actually due November 30th to them so that'll all get swept in as well so we're in a good place.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you Diana I appreciate your your explaining so we have a motion and a second without further discussion all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 10 time has been set aside for discussion of COVID-19 relief pay for eligible employees. Mr. Manager?
Here, members of the council at your request I had brought this item back this is not a new item we've talked about this many many times we have come up with a recommendation with a with a few thoughts and if you with me for a quick second I'll walk you through them first of all the the effort and if you remember when we first started the discussion was are we able to use the the cares money or the CRF to fund employee particularly essential workers pay and we were hoping to get some guidance and kind of waited and waited and waited the guidance we got does not is not very broad in in how we could pay for some we'll call it differential cost there so what we've done or what I've done is basically broken it down into two pieces that would not be covered by cares money or CRF the first would be a tier and I'll call them the workers that worked at least or excuse me yeah at least 50% of the time that were during the stay at home order they were actually at their workplace so this is garbage truck drivers police officers firefighters meter readers bus drivers those folks that were not able to work remotely and had to show up to their place of work at least 50% of the time my recommendation is that we would allocate $500 to them as a lump sum payment one-time payment that is based on the six-week stay-at-home order and so if you do the math six weeks times $2 an hour which was what we were originally talking when we first started this it comes out to $480 I've just recommended that we raise it to $500 the second part of this is we'll call tier two which is basically everyone else that did not qualify under tier one as long as they were employed and worked and during this time and that my recommendation for that amount is $250 which equates to about a dollar an hour increase it is again a one-time lump payment or lump sum my expectation is that if you authorize me to do that I will move towards getting that accomplished in the second to third week of November the total cost of this is right at about 1.6 million and again keep in mind it is not it'll have to come out of the general fund cash carry forward it will not be reimbursed directly from FEMA or from the CRF the coronavirus relief fund. Mayor with that I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. City Manager. I do see the vice mayor hands up. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Your Honor, Mr. Manager, is this pensionable? Is it is the amounts we're talking about?
Yeah, so Mayor Vice Mayor Cunningham the answer is no because it is a one-time payment.
Okay.
And that was pieces that we worked hard to reduce those costs and looked at it and because we're able to do this as a one-time payment it is not pensionable.
And this will come out of our one-time money?
Mayor Vice Mayor, that's correct.
And what's going to be so where's our projected fund balance at because I I knew we we had a really good one and we were coming in you know in January of this year we were looking at finishing FY21 memory serves between 90 between 66 and you know 75 million dollars and at this point I don't know where we're going to I think we finished 21 excuse me we finished 20 where did we finish at 20 32 33?
Mayor, I'm going to turn it over to Joyce she's got the the actual numbers there so that we're not we're not estimating Joyce?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor and council and I was going to touch on this at the financial update so a couple things for fiscal year 20 because of the FTA funds that we got and the use of the CRF funds to cover the payroll that left us at the end of fiscal year 20 $33 million to help fund the operations for fiscal year 21 so taking that aside from prior year cash carry forward and additional revenues that we had for fiscal year 20 will have about 69.2 million dollars available now I'm telling you that's projected and unaudited right now
This is this is this is at the end of 20?
Yes.
Okay and then and we've we've gamed out the end of 21 on the assumption that the pandemic continues we've gained out 21 and we came in like 34 we came in at like 34 we're going to spend that down?
We're going to spend down the cash carry forward we had from fiscal year 20 at 30 million dollars.
Okay, yeah, 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 all right, no, 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 that's what I thought so it was this built into that 30 at the time you did it?
The payments to the employees? No.
The 1.6 that we're about to promptly authorize?
No, it's not.
But this is going to go to employees who went to work every day in the field during the pandemic?
That's correct.
All right, do you need a motion?
Yes, Vice Mayor, we do need a motion.
Well, look, I mean, here's the deal. I'm a teacher and I've been teaching online for the past four or five weeks and I taught online after the last six weeks of school lessons nowhere at nine I think it was almost nine weeks of school lesson and I remember talking to some of my friends and talking to people who were still going to work every day and just the fear itself was overwhelming to a lot of families not only that we had some members who did get infected and they had to juggle things around so I think the premium pays an appropriate allocation everybody from you know the first everyone talks about the first responders and absolutely but what about the people who picked up the garbage every day who had meter readers who went and fixed our streets in the middle of a pandemic that means a lot to me when cleaned up our parks that's who this is for it's one-time money and it's the least we can do so I move the manager's recommendation for the premium pay.
I'll second that. I have a question, Madam Mayor, to Mr. Ortega.
Yes, Councilmember Fimidis let me go to Steve and then over to you I don't see any other hands up.
That's fine.
But let's let's go to Steve and then and then you.
I have absolutely no problem with the tier one recommendation. I have absolutely no problem with the Tier One recommendation, uh, for all the reasons Paul just, Paul just listed off. But the Tier Two, uh, working from home and learning new skills doesn't strike me as being a burden that we should be compensating people for. I mean, I know that, uh, people were actually using those ti- that time to go shopping and, you know, go for walks and come back and keep working, and, and I'm not demeaning the, the work, but it was, was not hazardous. It was actually convenient for lots of people. And so, if we're gonna be, uh, I mean, it's 1.6 million, I don't know what the breakdown is, but we just, uh, took on an extra burden that I think we should have for the bus fares, let's use some of these Tier Two dollars for that. I'm just not, I'm just not sold on the Tier Two allocation. Tier One, absolutely 100%. Uh, but I don't, I don't think Tier, I don't think the Tier Two per people were particularly burdened. I think it was a, a value to them to be able to stay home for a while.
Councilmember Feimbrus.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Steve took the words right out about the bus fares also, looking at that, and Mark, Mike, how did you come up with the 1.6 million? Is that all the city employees that you found, you already looked into all these? And, and I know you mentioned bus drivers were so important and first responders. How did you factor in, how did you come up with 1.6 million?
Sure, thank you, uh, Mayor, Councilmember Feimbrus, and, and I'll also address Councilmember Kazatchek's, uh, comment as well. So, the, the key piece to this was really defining who came in and who wore during the pandemic and during the stay-at-home order. And so, those that we've talked about here are fairly straightforward. We'll use the term bus driver, you know, truck drivers, uh, police officers, et cetera, those are the easier ones. Uh, however, when you have folks that are working part-time in the office, part-time at home, uh, it starts to get very wiggy and very difficult to define, uh, very quickly. However, the other piece to this that became important was, we did get feedback from employees that are working at home, that they did have increases in cost. Uh, electricity, uh, they had to buy furniture, they had to do things that were different and had expenses. Now, I will tell you that when we've, we started down this path, I had said, we're not reimbursing you for that. Um, that's all part of this and, and you having the opportunity to work from home. As we went down this, and, and I will tell you that the entire ELT wrestled with this. Um, we had everybody trying to figure out, what does it look like so it's not so complex? And, and ultimately, we end up with, with some challenges, uh, based on, on the recommendation. So, I, I don't wanna use that as a cop-out, but it is a reality that, you know, we have 4,500 employees, about, about 70%, 75% um, will fall into Tier One, plus or minus, and the remainder will be in that Tier Two. So, the Tier Two piece, um, is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna estimate is less than 1,500 employees, that's what I'm, I'm estimating. Um, so the rest of them would all fall into the, uh, into Tier One. So, the vast majority of our employees, uh, well, high number of our employees will receive, will be in Tier One versus Tier Two.
Thank you, Michael.
I just wanted to add, uh, to the conversation that, you know, since the pandemic first started, um, I, I know that most of my colleagues on the council, um, probably all of us, have talked about the possibility of hazard pay for our employees. And, um, you know, in, in this time of pandemic, and all of us really having to, um, having to be, carry the burden of, um, of the situation that is happening in the city of Tucson. Um, I know that, that the Tier One employees are, are the ones that were showing up to work day in, day out. Um, really delivering the service to our community, um, knowing full well that they were putting themselves in danger. And so, um, the conversation had gotten to a place where we didn't know if, if this hazard pay was going to happen. And we just kept at it. And, um, with the help of the city manager and his staff, really, uh, came out with an approach that took everyone, all of the city of Tucson family under consideration. Um, I wanted to make sure that we differentiated the Tier One employees, those that have to pick up, leave their family, um, and come to work driving a garbage truck, a recycling truck, those that, um, you know, have to get in their police vehicle, fire vehicle. Uh, the 911 call takers, dispatchers that have to be right there at their desk or at, at work, um, no matter what, to deliver the services that, um, Tucson residents are accustomed to. Um, and I also understand that Tier Two employees were also carrying the load for us as well, right? Um, but I wanna thank every member of the city of Tucson family for, for, um, for their hard work, dedication to the service of the rest of the, of, of the Tucson residents. And so, I'm just very grateful to everyone. I'm glad that we did not give up on the count, concept of hazard pay, and that we're finding a way to be able to, uh, reward that presence. Um, to do their work, um, without, without questioning, um, their dedication to the job. So, um, I do see, um, Vice Mayor Cunningham's hand up, and I believe Steve is hand up. And I don't know, Councilmember Feimbrus, if you, um, wanted to add to the conversation.
No, Madam Mayor, I just, uh, you answered my questions, and I know that's what Ortega did. Thank you.
Thank you. So, it's Vice Mayor and then Steve.
So, I think that, I think that Steve makes a good point about the Tier Two, but at the same time, all of a sudden, we get into a situation where we're literally combing through and going, well, this person worked seven hours at home and 15 hour, you know, and we're getting in, I, I, I don't like the idea of doing that, uh, when the Tier Two piece is only representing, I wanna say 15% of this money, if my math's right. If 70% of the, of the people receiving the Tier, if the whole package is 1.6 million, and 70% of the people receiving it are Tier One, then that means that, and that they're getting, their portion is, is, is twice. They're, the, the, if I'm, if my rudimentary algebra is, is right, it, it sounds like that's 15% of the cost. So, that's a thing I'm willing to do. Um, as a constituent recently pointed out, uh, balances with the $250 wellness incentive, we're, we're, you know, that we could, that we just had to. So, anyway, I'm gonna go with, uh, I'm gonna stick with it. I think, I think we're on the right track. Look, we're never gonna get this perfect. We only have so much time to do this, so, um, I, I, I wish we could tweak it. I just don't see, it sounds to me like you, the ELT, kinda tried to work everything out, and this was the solution they came up with. So, yes, there's some bad here, but it's not that bad. And, and, you know, uh, some of the folks who did work really hard, up and down. So, I'm, I'm fine helping out our employees.
But it's Steve, and then, I don't know if anyone else has, uh, commentary. Go ahead.
So, based on Mike Ortega, based on the way you described this, uh, people buying, buying furniture and things, I guess I have a question for Mike Rankin, based on your description. Um, it's, it's compensating people for home-based expenses, having to buy, buy furniture and having to, you know, do that kind of stuff, rearrange homes and stuff. So, for Mike Rankin, from a labor law standpoint, once we start down the road of compensating people for home-based expenses, aren't we on the hook for all of them? Are we opening up potentially a Pandora's box in the 250 grows?
So, uh, Mayor and, and Councilmember Kazatchek, I think it was important that, although the manager was giving examples of some of the hardships, I'll, I'll call it, because that's of the words we've been using, um, that folks who, even, even the folks who worked remotely, um, uh, experienced, the $250 for the Tier Two is not, uh, calculated to, as a reimbursement for those expenses. It's just an acknowledgement that there were, uh, things that the folks who worked remotely, um, uh, you know, also had hardship. But you make a good point. It is not a direct payment for, um, expenses that, you know, whether it be printing, uh, expenses because they had to print things at home, et cetera. Uh, we, that was a path we didn't wanna go down and try and, uh, have, uh, some kind of calculation of what individual expenses were for individual employees, in, in part because of the, the reason that you raised there.
Right, it's, I recognize it's de minimis to Paul's point, uh, in, in the whole scheme of things, we just need to be careful in how we're referring to it.
Alrighty, thank you for your response, um, Mr. Attorney. And I don't see any other hands up for, we have a motion and a second. If there are no other discussions, um, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much. Really appreciate the conversation. We move on to item 11. Time has been set aside for discussion of the Central Business District. Um, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, this is a continuation of a conversation we started last meeting. Uh, just to refresh your memory, um, what I suggested I'd bring back to you, and, and we're ready to, to discuss with you, and by the way, I'll turn it over to Barbara in just a minute. Uh, the first item was a renewal of the Central Business District with the same boundaries that were there before. That's item 13 on the regular agenda, so, uh, certainly welcome to discuss that, but that will be, uh, considered by the council separately this evening. The second was, uh, I believe Councilmember Kazatchek had asked for a report on the, uh, G-Plats that had been issued to date. Um, and so I know Barbara has, I believe there were 25, and Barbara has some information for you on that, and there was a spreadsheet in the materials that was provided. The third was, uh, identification of a process for the commercial, uh, business district boundary changes going forward, whether they be contraction or expansion. Um, and so how we, uh, go beyond what the state statute requires and have a robust, uh, citizen engagement or stakeholder participation, uh, component of that. And then the fourth was a, uh, or is a discussion about how we can, uh, restructure, if you will, uh, reconsider the way that G-Plats are approved or the conversation around G-Plats, specific to point systems, specific to on-investments within, uh, the developments, uh, that are meeting community goals. So, with that, Mayor, uh, with your permission, I'll turn it over to Barb. She's got a brief, uh, PowerPoint, and then we can open it up to questions.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, Mike, I didn't ask for a review of all 25. What I wanted was to assure that when we issue, when we approve one, someone's auditing their, their, their success as, on an annual basis. That, that was a piece we didn't have in play.
And I think, I think Steve, that's, that's good. Um, I think Steve, well, the, this particular conversation is, I, I believe that's the conversation we want to have, to make sure that we're, um, one, asking the city manager what, what his recommendation is for Mayor and Council today. And two, that we have a more thorough, um, discussion as to, uh, where the council wants to go with not just the map, but, um, how, um, G-Plats are issued, the process, community engagement strategies, uh, to receive community input. And, um, and, and then what's, what's the way to proceed? So, let's, uh, let's hear from Barbara, and then we can open it up for discussion. Go ahead, Barbara. Thank you for being here.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. And Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, good afternoon. Barbara Coffey, Director of Economic Initiatives. So, tonight, uh, or this afternoon, here we are, talking about the renewal, uh, of the existing Central Business District. So, the map that you see before you, uh, everything in red is, uh, reflective of our current Central Business District boundaries. Uh, and that is, um, and that is what we are discussing tonight. So, in the backup documentation in the agenda, uh, for the study session item, included, uh, a matrix on the G-Plat projects that have, uh, that have taken place in the city, that have been approved. And there are 22 G-Plat projects since 2013 that have the eight-year abatement. Um, we did, uh, show an analysis of the pre-G-Plat value of those projects, all 22, totaling about $34 million. And the estimated post-G-Plat value, so after the G-Plat lease was awarded and the, and the, uh, project was completed, um, the estimated number from the economic impact analysis totaled $209 million of those, all 22 projects. We also showed you the 2020 assessed value. Uh, so, in other words, the current, uh, assessed value for those projects that have an assessment, uh, that totals more than $90 million already. Um, all the projects of the 22 there are in wards one and six, except for one project that has occurred in Ward Three, or has been approved in Ward Three. Now, all but five of those 22 have received their certificate of occupancy. There are four under construction right now. We also, uh, did an analysis of the developer entities for these projects, and all but three of the projects, uh, have been developed by local development entities and, and firms. Now, the last stat here on this chart, all but one G-Plat project, uh, shows that they have exceeded the 100% valuation requirement, that is the requirement by statute, uh, based on that 2020 assessed value. The one outlier, uh, is at a 93% increase in value, and it's entering its fourth year of the abatement period. Oops. So, a couple more facts and figures that I thought would be helpful, just to see how these projects have materialized. Primary uses for the 22 projects, uh, nine of them were residential in nature. Nine of them feature some retail and office. And three projects that have been approved are hospitality, and there is one industrial project. Projects, uh, here, also interesting to note, um, how and where, you know, what they did in terms of accomplishment of, of their development. Eight of the projects converted parking lots, uh, so underutilized parking lots. Five projects of the 22 activated buildings that had been vacant for some time. Five projects resulted in the rehabilitation or preservation of historic buildings. One of the projects is, uh, developed over a vacant lot. And then, uh, I noted that not a single one of the 22 projects, uh, replaced any single-family, uh, housing. So, here's just a few images that I know you're familiar with. It's interesting to note, uh, the heart was one of the first projects, uh, approved, uh, back in 2012, 2013, I believe. It is the first one that will come, uh, do, uh, or come off of its eight-year abatement period at the end of next year. Uh, the cadence, you can see, uh, you've seen projects like the, uh, the rehabilitation of the property, uh, one of the historic building rehabs for Mr. Carwash's headquarters. Uh, Brother John's Barbecue, um, is also another small business example. Uh, AC Marriott, one of the, the first hotel in, in the downtown area, I think in four decades, when it was built. Uh, the Trinity is an office project that was recently completed. Uh, the Tuxen Hotel is a, uh, renovation of a former Motel 6 property into a boutique hotel, and it opened, uh, just around July 4th this past summer. And the Rendezvous also just completed with its CFO, uh, and his, uh, apartments in downtown. Some of our, uh, more luxury apartment product, uh, that is now serving downtown. So, to wrap up my comments, as we look at, uh, as you have suggested, uh, Mayor and, and, uh, Mr. Ortega, that when, uh, we can take an opportunity here to reconsider basically, uh, the boundaries of the Central Business District, uh, in the next few months, we can reconsider the use of the G-Plat as an economic development tool and the policies around that. And the goal is to do that in a manner where we engage, uh, broad community, uh, engagement. So, a very robust method, uh, of engaging not only members of, of a residential community, but the development community and other stakeholders, uh, involved. And we can do this, uh, over the next, uh, couple of months before, between now and, and the first part of December, and do so in a manner that allows us to have a conversation facilitated by a third party, which I think will provide a meaningful discussion, and it will, it will bring all of the voices together in order to create some consensus around whether and how, or whether to move forward with some changes or modifications to the Central Business District boundary. The renewal gives us a 10-year timeframe for the life of the Central Business District, but we can come back here immediately and start to work on an engagement process to further discuss the future of the Central Business District and any modifications to that and to the use of the G-Plat tool. And so that is what is proposed in terms of a recommendation for, for your consideration, and that we could wrap that up by, by the end of the year, bringing something back to you at a council meeting the first part of December. And that way you can move forward with further consensus into the new year. So with that, I will exit out of the screen share.
Mayor, as Barbara is going through that, I'd like to just summarize. I think that part of the discussion point here is the council can guide us, and you can guide us either by saying, go out and have community conversation, and I'll even use the term start from scratch, on what the Commercial Business District boundaries look like, or you can also suggest to us, here's what we'd like you to consider upfront and go out and have more community dialogue. So that's, that's on the CBD of the Commercial Business District. On the G-Plat, again, you can guide us. Mayor, I know you and I have talked about return on investment and having those kinds of conversations. I think those are the kinds of things that we can then take out to the community and have conversations around that. Happy to have those discussions. So as much guidance as you can provide us and direction, the better as we embark on this. Barb did outline for you a potential schedule. Please know that some of that will be pretty flexible based on the type of input we get, based on the logistics of getting people together to make sure that we've, we've really given everybody who want to live in an opportunity. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Let me just start the conversation and then, and then open it up for my colleagues on the council. For me, economic development and community development are so broad, and really, there's so many different areas of, it's so holistic, it's so broad and holistic. And I'm very passionate about both economic development and community development. When I first got elected in November of 2007, we were, I entered my tenure as a council member into a massive, great recession. And I remember at the time, the city of Tucson did not even have an economic development office. We didn't have any tools to use for, for economic incentives. We were losing $30 million a year in revenue, and we were in a very, very difficult place. I took it upon myself as a, as a council member to study economic development, to find out what other cities across Arizona did to stimulate the economy. And, and I took it upon myself to also take a look at how we invested as a community, as a city, in the urban core of our region, which is in the city of Tucson. Our downtown was absolutely dead. And I really put hand to paper to try and put policy into practice that would be good for not just stimulating our economy, but also stimulating community investment and community development. And I wanted to make sure that we were investing in our urban core, that we pushed on ideas that would create opportunities for transit-oriented development. Put on the table for my colleagues to consider an economic development plan, pushed that the city of Tucson create an economic initiatives office, and that we pushed on transit-oriented development, while at the same time begging and pleading and lobbying our congressional delegation for a tiger grant so that we could do millions of dollars for our streetcar in the city of Tucson. Since I got elected till now, we have been very smart about creating tools for our economic development toolbox. And what I have been feeling most recently, in the last three years, I would say, is that it is time for us to view our policies and the tools that we have in our toolbox. I firmly believe that we need to continue with this tool, that we need to renew the Central Business District. And I firmly believe that we also have to review how we do the G-Plat, how our map looks like, what is the return on investment for our community, and are we prepared as a city to put forward an affordable housing strategy, an affordable housing plan for our community? Because we have been very successful. In the last 10 years, we have seen numerous tools being used to create a better economy for our residents. We have seen millions and millions of dollars invested, not just in our downtown, but throughout the city of Tucson. And, but we also have to make sure that as we review other policies, right, we were talking about our water service policy earlier, we have to review what we have in front of us. And I firmly believe that we have to bring in the community for continued conversation, for engaging in the process, for creating community benefits that, that neighbors participate in, and that we are prepared as a city to not just expand what we have at the table, but expand other tools for small businesses, right? That's something that I, that I see still a gap in, that we have incentives that directly affect in a good way our, our small businesses and our micro businesses. And that's what we don't have, that we need to continue creating. I want to make sure that our community understands that we're not just approaching this particular conversation on the side of incentivizing development, but that we're also approaching this conversation on what the return on investment for the community is. That we do want to have a, an approach to affordable housing, both rental and homeownership, and, and that we are helping to keep people in place. Because where we have seen the investment happening with the Central Business District, we have community that is concerned about displacement and gentrification. And so the affordable housing strategy must, must be able to also have a strategy on keeping families in place and avoiding displacement for, for neighbors throughout the Central Business District. So with that, I wanted to open it up for discussion. I know my colleagues have, have ideas and concepts on how we, how we look at this process in an equitable way, and how we alleviate some of the concerns that neighbors have with direct action to create more opportunities for, for small businesses, micro businesses, creating other tools, and for community development. With that, I do see Councilmember Fimbras's hand up. Councilmember Fimbras.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you for putting the history into perspective, and thank you Barbara Coffey, also for letting us know the history. We discussed this a couple weeks ago, and we have discussed about neighborhood engagement and benefit agreements to be tied to G-Plats and the CBD, and made it clear at the September 9th meeting. I moved that we relaunch the process to discuss with the community to expand the Central Business District and revise the G-Plat policy. The community engagement process must include the following. That the process be driven and led by mayor and council, with the manager's office, economic initiatives, and staff supporting the mayor and council through this process. That the number of community meetings to be determined after further conversations with the mayor and council, and the community engagement process to be managed and led by the facilitator that will support the mayor and council and staff as we move forward with G-Plats and community benefits agreements. That's, I know that's for tonight, but I wouldn't put those notes, those points we're taking into the, you know, into the issue and address it, because this is so critical. And we don't know what happened. We are in the middle of COVID virus right now. We don't know where our economy was going to be in the next few months, and we, I think we need to preserve every tool that we have that were going to be able to help us get out of this and provide the services so needed by our most vulnerable, most needy citizens of this community. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Hi, Mr. Councilmember Fimbras. I, as we, as I walk into my first year as mayor of the city of Tucson, we are confronted with this pandemic and the possibility, as we know, of another economic crisis. I think it's appropriate to keep a tool in the toolbox that we can use, but that we use in a, in a smart way, and that we develop a process that makes sense. So with that, there is a motion on the floor. As I hear it, Councilmember Santa Cruz, I see your hand up.
I have comments. And so maybe first, first point of clarification, Councilmember Fimbras, are you then saying to accept the existing boundaries as well as part of your motion, and then also?
I think this is something we need to work on, Lane, or Councilwoman, we need to, we keep the, keep this tool in the toolbox, but fine tune it with Barbara Coffey and the city manager's expertise on this and moving it to, it benefits the city of Tucson and our citizens, you know. And, and it has been. I think 22 or 23 of the projects that have been placed have been benefited by local business people, local community leaders that have helped us. So we need to continue to fine tune this. We're the last city to come into the, utilizing the G-Plat. So we need to, with your expertise and our colleagues on the council, I think we need to do this and move it forward and make it a better tool for all of us.
So for clarification, Councilmember Fimbras, this is, you, this motion is, is moving the city manager's recommendation, which is renewal with the current map, and then you're adding?
The benefits package for the citizens of the community, the neighborhoods.
And the community engagement. Okay.
Yes.
Mayor, so I have some comments, but I didn't know if this needed to be second before we moved on to the discussion.
Yes, I do have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Councilmember Santa Cruz?
Thank you, Mayor. I know that, you know, we've been having conversations and hearing from, you know, community residents, from the, specifically even the Barrios Neighborhood Coalition, on what this means for us, moving, like the impact that they've had in us moving forward. I, you know, I guess, right, like right now at this moment, I'm feeling like I can accept, you know, Councilmember Fimbras's motion, but I wanted to include, like, I guess, a friendly amendment that, like, I appreciate the comprehensive community engagement piece, but also to include an analysis of the community impact that includes an equity lens to study the existing Central Business District and the G-Plat from 2012 to 2020. Like, what were the racial and economic equity impacts of the development? Who benefited from and/or was burdened by the development? Did rents rising displace people? And if so, who? Did the development help build toward a just, equitable, and sustainable future? And what are the lessons learned and recommendations for future consideration? As one piece of it, the other one being that future redistricting and G-Plat conversations also include a health impact assessment, an equity assessment, and incentivizing development that is specific to attainable, affordable housing, neighborhood-scale job creation, including small businesses, emerging business incubators, and worker-owned cooperatives? So that would be the piece that I would want to include. I know that this is, you know, a challenging, a challenging moment, and I know that the conversation is focused on our economic future, and I think that's important. I think that where we lose some of our community is that they feel like, you know, we have folks who've been living in poverty for such a long time, and their neighborhoods and their small businesses haven't been invested in. And I see this as a different, as a different time, especially like, you know, for myself, even being in office, having had that, that experience of growing up in these neighborhoods. So how do we look to the past, and how do we preserve our legacy, or how do we preserve, you know, a lot of the traditions that makes us unique here in Tucson, while also acknowledging the injustices of the past? So how do we, like, like, how do we see ourselves as a bridge to a more, to have a vision, you know, a future vision that is centered around like a just and democratic and sustainable future? So that's where I'm at right now at the moment. I want to continue the dialogue. I want to see this as an opportunity to bring in those voices, because I think it's easy to articulate what we're against all the time. But on the other hand, we have to be able to articulate what we are for. And so I am for having all the things that I listed out in the, in the friendly amendment and centering our community voices in all of it.
I, I, I consider that, and I say, yes, it's not a problem, I don't think, because this is a tool that we've used for 10 years, and we need to fine tune it and continue growing, because we don't know. If we don't want programs to go by the white side that affect our most evil, vulnerable citizens, we have to find ways to generate resources to help them. And can you send that to the clerk, Lane, your?
Yes.
You need to find another, you need to find another second then, because I'm not going to accept a full-blown study before we move this forward. So I'm not going to second that. I think that confuses, I think that confuses the motion. All we are trying to do is begin a community dialogue about the continuation of the current CBD and what kinds of things we want to be included in there as far as the G-Plat is concerned, not a, not a study of history. And so if that's a part of the motion, Richard, then I'm going to withdraw my second.
So the friendly amendment is accepted. Do we have another second?
I will, I will second it, and I think it is important, because some of the community feedback we've been getting is that folks want to know what the impact, the real impact has been before we move forward.
So there is a motion and a second. Any continued discussion?
Mr. Ortega, you have any comments?
Mayor, yes. Thank you, Councilmember Fimbras. So I just want to make sure that there's clarity. The conversation that you all are having is specific to the direction on the future G-Plat, the future CBD boundary discussions. And certainly, I'll, I'll look to get a copy of Councilwoman Santa Cruz's motion or amendment to the motion. The one that's not on the table right now is the renewal, which will be this evening, it's item 13. Just wanted to make sure you're clear that you're giving us some direction on next steps with regard to CBD, the CBD change process and the G-Plat, we'll call it the, the G-Plat review and analysis of new potential return on investment policies. So that's all, Mayor.
I think you're right. Mr. Ortega, and I like the additions made with the friendly amendment. It's more than just a conversation about, like, where's the map, and, you know, what's the tool in terms of the G-Plat? It's a bigger conversation, especially if we're It, it's a bigger conversation, especially if we're bringing in community. And being able to kind of be much more holistic of how, about how we view this particular tool in the toolbox that we have and how we attach additional incentives, right? Because what I hear from Councilmember Santa Cruz is that we also create additional incentives and additional tools for small businesses, for micro businesses. And how, how does the city of Tucson invest in that? So it's, so it expands the conversation a bit, which I, which I like. I do see Mike Rankin's hand up and I, and I see Councilmember Santa Cruz's hand up.
And Mayor, members of council, I just wanted you to know I'm checking as quickly as I can if the maker of an amendment to a motion can be the second on that motion once the amendment is accepted by the maker. I'll confess, it's the first time I think that I've run into that. So I'm just checking on that. In the meantime, if there were someone else who's prepared to second it, that would serve the same purpose while I'm researching this.
So we do hear a second from Councilmember Lee with, with the amendment. So there's a motion and a second. And then you're going to have to clarify this. This issue, I've never heard of such thing, Rankin, but I'll trust you. Councilmember Santa Cruz, did you have anything in addition?
No, that, I, I left my hand up from last time.
Madam Mayor, why the date of October 1st is so important to Tucson's CBD and G-Plat? Can you reiterate this for people, Mr. Ortega?
Mayor, go ahead, Barb, if you wanted to outline. I know that's the renewal date for the extension. Go ahead, Barb.
Yes, Mayor and Councilmember Fimbras, members of council. And I think Mike Rankin can, can back me up on this. But state statute requires all the municipalities to renew their central business districts on or before October 1st. And so it is a state requirement. And so that keeps us in compliance if we renew our existing district. If we do not renew, if a community does not renew its central business district, it would expire or sunset in five years' time.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, Barbara. Councilmember Kozakic.
Question for Richard. You made the motion. Who is, who are you proposing facilitates these conversations?
I was going to have the city manager point us in that direction. Because this is out of his office still.
As a part of the motion, you, there's a third-party facilitator outside of the office. Who's that going to be?
Mike.
Sir, Mayor, Councilman Kozakic. Barb, I know you've been going down this path for a bit. Why don't you go ahead and let him know what you're thinking?
So, well, we have not identified or sought any interested parties for that yet. Again, this was an important step first is to have the discussion with you here during study session. Since, you know, when you determine that that's a path we should take, then starting tomorrow, we'll get right together with management and our team and begin to, to talk about outreach to potential facilitators and, and interview those. We may have some on-call services, but we have not investigated who that might be yet.
And question, Lane, you could read the, reread your friendly amendment, please, so we can all hear that again because that will be a part of what this facilitator has to manage.
And before you do that, Councilmember, Barbara, we can, you could move considerably fast with, with someone to help us do those community engagement facilitating meetings, right?
Muted.
Mayor, I think she, go ahead.
I think she said yes. Alrighty, and go ahead, Councilmembers.
An analysis of the community impact that includes an equity lens to study the existing central business district and G-Plat from 2012 to 2020. What were the racial and economic equity impacts of the development? Who benefited from or was burdened by the development? Did rents rising displace people? If so, who? Did the development have built toward a just, equitable, and sustainable future? What are the lessons learned and recommendations for future consideration? And then the next piece was future redistricting and G-Plat conversations to also include a health impact assessment, an equity assessment, and incentivizing development that is specific to attainable, affordable housing, neighborhood-scale job creation, including small businesses, emerging business incubators, and worker-owned cooperatives.
So, um, just to remind people that, that later tonight during the regular, regular agenda, we will have the opportunity to renew. So we will be renewing tonight based on what I hear from this conversation. This conversation, this particular dialogue that we're having is how do we proceed with the process? And so it's two, it's two separate conversations. The renewal, hopefully later tonight, will be approved by mayor and council. This particular conversation is to lay the groundwork and what we're thinking as mayor and council on how we proceed with community dialogue and engagement to reimagine this particular tool for the community. So there's a motion and a second. If there aren't any additional commentary, I see the vice mayor's hand up. Vice Mayor, I believe you're still on mute. If you can start all over again.
I have a few questions. All right. So the impact equity lens from 2012 to 2020, do you want to do that just for the next iteration of the map? Or do you want to do that for each G-Plat?
Councilmember Cunningham, I'm talking about a study looking back to what happened. Folks in the community have been asking what the, what the community impact has been, whether it was health or social impact for us to take into consideration as we're making a recommendation for, for the future. And then the, yeah, the other ask is as we continue these conversations that we include this like health impact assessment and equity assessment as part of the proposals.
So for each G-Plat, we're going to have, we're going to require a health impact assessment and an equity impact assessment?
No.
Or are we going to do that for the map? I'm just trying to get the wording right because I-
I think it needs to be part of both. Like it needs to be part of as we're thinking about the central business district that we, that that be taken into consideration. And it might not have that much of, you know, and it's probably going to look different when we're talking about the central business district and then the G-Plat. Just to keep that, you know, at the forefront.
It's all good. Like I, I, in, in ideology, actually, I, I, I agree with all this. Just trying to, I'm trying to get some mechanics in. It's up, I'm just trying to find out some. So one of the things we talked about was incubators and worker-owned co-ops. So, and then what, what, one of them was rent, what was it, not impacting rents nearby? What was the four, the four at the bottom?
When I'm talking about like if, if rents-
After you, after you talked about the health, the health impact assessment and equality impact assessment, you said that emerging markets, worker-owned co-ops, business incubators, you had like five criteria after that. Can you read that part?
How do we incentivize development that is specific to like attainable and affordable housing and neighborhood-scale job creation?
Neighborhood-scale job creation, that's the one I was missing.
Yeah.
I like that one too. Hey, so this is what I'm, because this is kind of where I'm going on this. Right now, one of the things that happened, and this is one of the things that, you know, in talking to the business community, a lot of them are grasping, is that we passed the G-Plats and property values would go up and homeowners aren't as affected, but the renters were more affected. Because what would happen is landlord would raise the rent more than the 5% of the property tax. You'd see 15, 20% rent raises. And it was kind, it was, and you had people who'd been living in that neighborhood for like 30 years required to be moved. And so I'm trying to see if that, um, if that catches this. I'm assuming it does, but I want to make sure it catches this. Then I'm kind of saying, all right, if we're going to do a health impact assessment and equity assessment in each G-Plat, that means they're going to have to pay a consultant through each assessment. So we could either, would it be a separate consultant to do the health and equity? Or are they going to do the financial impact study? Because we have, we already use one, we already require one consultant. So are we going to require another consultant? Or can that G-Plat consultant do all three pieces?
I mean, we might be getting ahead of ourselves with that. But I think if they're able to do that right now, all we're looking at is economic impact and we're not taking, you know, the-
You're totally, no, you're totally right on. Yeah, no, you're, you're totally, this is, you're absolutely right on, on the, on the separate impacts. I just, I like the idea of that assessment. And I'm just kind of, you know, I'm, I'm trying to put it down on paper so I understand where it is moving forward. I'm actually pretty comfortable as long as, as long as when, when we require it, what I don't want to be doing is I don't want the city outlaying money for those consultants. I want to make the developer do that. And also I don't want to be in a situation where we lose, we lose, we lose some decent ones, we lose some good ones because they don't want to pay consultant fees. That's kind of what I'm thinking about in my head, but that's for down the road. In, at the end of the day, in spirit, the ideas behind the amendment and the motion made by Mr. Fimbras allow us to have this conversation. It's a conversation that's been a long time coming. So I'll be, I'm in support of it. And I think that again, there's some mechanics there that are going to get a little bit convoluted. But the idea to recognize a point system later on down the road that extra, that gives extra points for emerging markets and worker-owned co-ops and business incubators is, is awesome. We're going to have to try to, you know, there's going to be a couple of tough ones. You know, those worker-owned co-ops, they're a worker-owned co-op for a year and then somebody gets bought out and, and do they still get their abatement? So there's going to be some mechanics that'll go into some of those financial plans. But I think that as far as the, the quant of what, of where we're going, I think we're, I think we're, I think we're where we need to be.
I do see Mike Rankin's hand up. Mike, did you want to add something?
I think that is a vestigial, but nonetheless, I can just confirm that the, the motion is appropriately in front of the body at this point.
Okay. Steve?
Yeah. So our goal is, our goal in all of this is to help small local projects. And the proposed, you know, these, the community benefits checklist gives an inherent advantage to large projects. Some of the items on that checklist, smaller builders simply can't bring to the table. And so if we're going down this road, they need to be, a stronger weight needs to be given to things such as using local contractors, local job creation, sustainable environment design, that kind of thing. But if we're going to be asking each project to be going through all these analyses, to Paul's point, some of them are not going to be able to fund them. I mean, simply not. They could, the, the reason they're applying for the G-Plat is because they need the G-Plat incentive in order to, in order to make the project go. So to be adding on extra costs for extra analyses and studies is going to kill the projects. The small local ones. Now, the big ones, AC Marriott, they can afford that. But that's not what we're trying to help in these things. So I think this is a counterproductive direction. Not to say that I'm opposed to equity or any of that, but to try and, to try and shoehorn that into our incentivizing a small development, the success of a small development, I think is just the wrong, the wrong approach. We can have this equity discussion, every item we have. But when we're trying to help a little co-op up, come up out of the ground, you may be having the opposite effect as to what you're hoping for.
I believe that as we engage with stakeholders in the community, what the direction that mayor and council have given you, Barbara and Mr. City Manager, you know, that's, that's part of the sausage making, right? That's part of the process of engaging community members. And that includes developers as stakeholders. We will be able to come up with, with a process that, um, that is smart. And, um, you know, that, that mayor and council is flexible enough to be able to say, okay, what is it that we can do to make sure that, again, back to the return on investment, that there's a return on investment of the community, the residents, and the taxpayers of the city of Tucson. So I can imagine that this conversation will expand, will continue with the input and engagement of, of all stakeholders in our community. That's what I think, Councilmember Santa Cruz, that your intent is to lay a framework and, um, and think about this process outside of the boxes as we gather community information and stakeholder input, that we are going to add more, more meat to the bones of your framework.
Yes, Mayor, yes, for sure. I, like I hear what Councilmember Kozakic is saying and his concerns, and I think they're valid. And I think what our community is also asking us is like, what are the protections? And how are we looking out for them? And not just what they're calling greedy corporations, you know, to come and develop and incentivizing them, you know, to come into, you know, like historic or legacy neighborhoods. So it is, yeah, I think it's in the sausage making, like the mayor said. And how do we take these different frameworks into account? And how do we also like partner and work with them and help bring them along? Because it is true, the people who have the money and have the savviness, you know, and the know-how navigate the system that exists right now. And the small businesses or the small local developers have no idea how to even access any of this. So, you know, we've talked about having navigators for different, you know, pieces in the work that the city's doing. And so I see that in, in line. But if we're not intentional, um, at this moment, you know, we're, it's not going to translate on the other side.
I believe Councilmember Lee had her hand up, Councilmember Lee. And then I believe also Mike Rankin had his hand up, but I'm, I think he's done.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I just, I really appreciate the conversation that everyone's having and the points that are brought up. They're all very valid and really important. I just wanted to throw out there that perhaps since Councilmember Santa Cruz brought this up, you know, maybe the assessment is, is something that we generate and it doesn't involve, you know, attorneys and people to help the businesses. It's, it's a questionnaire or something that, that we can help prompt them to think through. And it, it won't be a heavy lift or an expensive cost to the business owners. And hopefully it's something that we can help facilitate. So I just wanted to say that, you know, I don't, I don't know what that'll look like. But hopefully as we develop what those assessments will look like, it can be tools that maybe we can provide that will be included in the application package that won't cost a lot for the business owners. Because I think there's a lot of really important points that we need to bring these conversations forward and do so in a way that doesn't put a financial burden on, on the business. So just great conversation and just wanted to share that thought.
Right on. Mr. Rankin? I see you-
Mayor, I didn't intend to have my hand up, so.
Alrighty, so there is a motion and a second. And that is, that motion is inclusive of the friendly amendment of Councilmember Santa Cruz. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
I'm a no.
So motion passes 6-1. Thank you so much. I believe the next item on the agenda is item 12, state and national legislation updates. Are there any state and national legislation or regional committee issues for discussion? I do see Andrew Greenhill. Go ahead, Andrew.
Except that vote was 5-1. Durham's not with us.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, clarification. Motion passes by a vote of 5-1. Go ahead, Andrew.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, members of the councils, um, quick federal and state updates at the request of Councilmember Fimbras. First, I want to report that Congress is, from what I hear, finalizing an agreement on the continuing resolution. This would be an agreement that would extend this year's budget past September 30th, which is the end of the federal fiscal year. It would, what's being discussed would, would allow the federal government to stay open until December 11th. They're working on that as- They're working on that as we speak. That would in turn hold up some of the negotiations on the fiscal year 21 budget, which includes some of the military and other budgets that we've discussed at other times. So, but we'll continue to work on that post-election should the CR be successful. Since the last council meeting on the CARES Act, Tucson is successful in receiving another $4.9 million of CARES Act funds. These are CDBG funds that do have some additional flexibility to them. These funds can be used for rental assistance, which is one of the key needs that we have here in the community. So that brings the total amount of direct dollars from the CARES Act received by the city of Tucson to over $158 million. Again, we're very grateful to our federal delegation, to Mayor and Council for your support for the CARES Act and to city staff, including those who have helped implement, making sure that a lot of these dollars have helped preserve city services as well as getting those dollars to the community. We are still hoping that there may be some movement on a new stimulus package. At this, to this point in time, the, the leadership in the House and Senate have not been able to agree on a new stimulus package. Last week, there was a, a proposal that was unveiled by what's called the Problem Solvers Caucus. It did include $500 billion for state and local governments. However, both the leadership in the House and Senate have not agreed to take that bill up, at least not at this point in time. IGR continues to push for a new stimulus package that includes dollars for state and local government as well as for meeting the community's needs, especially in the areas of rental assistance, childcare, education and nutrition assistance. Just a few other things, updates on issues important to Mayor and Council. The U.S. Postal Service issues and the census issues are both still being fought out, both in Congress and the courts. Not much action in Congress, however. There have been some court rulings around the country where federal judges have ordered the postal service to return to its operational standards from the beginning of this year. That means that they need to get back to delivering mail on time, or at least closer to on time. And we've seen some slowdowns in different parts of the country. It also includes a directive that they treat ballots as first-class mail, which is very important for the upcoming election. As far as the census is concerned, there was a hearing scheduled for last week that got delayed to this week, where a judge is considering a claim from a number of plaintiffs, including the Gila River Indian Community and the Navajo Nation, asking for the census to be continued to the original deadline for counting of October 31st and not to end at the end of this month, September 30th. We continue to support those efforts. And then lastly, at the request of Councilmember Fimbres, there was something in the newspaper recently about the I-10 and SR-210 or Barraza Aviation Project. We wanted an update on that. In August, the state Arizona Department of Transportation approved an environmental assessment, which showed a finding of no significant impact for the set of projects. And the project would widen I-10 from the west of I-19 interchange all the way to Cold. It would also extend Barraza Aviation from Gulf Links and Albernon down to a new connect south to I-10. So these projects did get their approval for the assessment. And design on some of those pieces of those projects will be the next step as we move forward. Mayor, that's the extent of my report to Mayor and Council. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andrew. Any additional questions? Already hearing none. Thank you so much, Andrew, for the update. Really, really appreciate it. Item 13, does anyone have items to remove from the consent agenda?
Your Honor, we do have a request to remove item B.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Item 14, does anyone have any future agendas?
I'll be submitting a memo for getting an update from the Salvation Army and providing up the other programs and services that they've gotten because of the COVID-19, what they're doing to help good citizens of our community.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much. We have concluded our study session, agenda for today. Study session is adjourned. The regular session begins in 10 minutes, or I'll give you 15 minutes. We'll start at 5:45. We can take a little bit here and there from other items on the agenda and the regular, in the regular meeting. But let me give you a 15-minute break and we will see that, we will see all of you and the community at 5:45. Thank you all. We'll see you in a bit.
Ladies and the audience in attendance, the council will stand in session. Roll call.
Vic Santa Cruz.
Here.
Mr Cunningham. He's here. Mr Durham.
Absent, excused. Mr Rankin wanted to add a comment. Mr Clerk?
All right.
I don't know if he's with us.
He has not joined the meeting yet, Your Honor.
Oh, okay. All righty, move ahead with the roll call.
Mrs Lee.
Here.
Mr Feenbrus. Absent, excused. Mr Kozaczek.
Here.
Mayor Romero.
Here. Yes, Mr Feenbrus is absent, excused. He will not be with us for the regular session. And I just wanted to make sure that the city attorney was available. If he's not, let's move forward. Item two.
Mayor, Mayor, the city attorney was trying to get your attention. He's having trouble. Just wanted to make sure that the council is clear that by acknowledging that Councilman Durham and Councilmember Feenbrus are excused, the council is in fact acknowledging that those are excused absences. There he is. I don't know if you want to weigh in anymore. There you go.
That's exactly right. By noting that the absence is excused, it's with the consent of the mayor and of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All righty, so item two.
Invocation and appointments to boards, committees, and commissions.
The invocation will be given by Anna Marufo, staff member to the city clerk's office.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Anna. Go ahead.
Deepen our love for our city and our desire to serve it. Strengthen our power of self-sacrifice for our city's welfare. Teach us to uphold its good name by our own right conduct. Cause us to see clearly that the well-being of our city is in the hands of all its citizens. Amen.
Item two B.
Appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Report from city manager.
City manager's communication number 294 dated September 22nd is received into and made part of the record. May I have a motion to approve the appointments of Rick Bright, Dennis Kuhn, Jeff Hamstra, Brent Woods, to the Tucson Pima County Joint Consolidated Code Committee?
So moved.
There is a motion. May I get a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. I would like to thank those of you for your willingness to serve in the City of Tucson committees. Thank you so much for your service. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Are there any personal appointments to be made at this time? Hearing none, let's move to item three.
Mayor and council reports summary of current events.
City manager's communication number 295 dated September 22nd is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow members of the mayor and council to report on current events. These are to be current events of activities within the community, not position statements on policy issues. I have a current event that I'd like to share with my colleagues on the council. And this is not news. This is something that happened through the weekend. We heard of the passing of Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. And this is where I would ask Councilmember Lee to wear her commemorative collar. Although Justice Ginsburg was not large in stature, she was a titan in the Supreme Court and in law, championing major court decisions and writing precedents, setting opinions on the issues of women's rights, reproductive rights, among many other issues that extended constitutionally protected liberties to all of us. Justice Ginsburg is an inspiration to young women in Tucson and throughout the world. And her life was marked by the shattering of several glass ceilings. She had to fight simply to get into a highly male-dominated law school before becoming the first tenured female professor of Columbia Law School, arguing consequential cases before the Supreme Court, and eventually being appointed as the second woman to serve on the high court after Arizona native Sandra Day or O'Connor. She accomplished all of this while fighting off multiple forms of cancer within the last 20 years. We will greatly miss Justice Ginsburg's voice on the court. Her now infamous exercise routine, her scathing dissents, and most importantly, her relentless passion for justice for each and every person in this great land. Rest in peace, Notorious RBG. With that, I'd like to invite my colleagues on the council to, if they have any summary of current events, we'll start with Ward one.
Thank you, Mayor, for that beautiful tribute. My only announcement tonight is to wish you a happy birthday. Birthday on Sunday, and thank you for being born. Thank you for your parents, for your whole family, for your children, that they share you with all of us, and just for your commitment to our community, and it's an honor to serve next to you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I really appreciate it. Vice Mayor Cunningham? You're in mute.
This is an ongoing announcement, and it's just as much community-oriented as it is. And that is that we have worked very hard to set up testing universally for anybody who needs it. You feel you've been exposed. If you've got a cop coming on, if you're just worried. If you've got a friend that got it that you were around, go get tested for COVID-19. Every single time a person gets a test and it's negative, they get a little peace of mind. Every single time somebody gets a test, and even if they have no symptoms, they they lower the probability of spread by knowing they have it and knowing they need to quarantine. So that's what I tell you. We are in Ward two. We have a testing site at Udall Park, and you can go in there any day of the week except Mondays and be tested and have your results back in as quick as 48 hours, but usually within 72 hours.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes, Mayor. First of all, just a big amen to your tribute to Justice Ginsburg. And also second, what Councilmember Santa Cruz said about your birthday. Happy birthday, Mayor. Just a couple announcements from the Ward four corner of Tucson. We have Tucson Roadrunners are going to be distributing face coverings to fans in a drive-through format at Lincoln Park, which is near the Clement Center at 8155 East Pointiana Drive on Wednesday, so 23rd from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. In return, they're asking for a can of food for donation for the Tucson, or for the Community Food Bank of Southern Arizona, if you're able to provide one, not required. Also, there is a mask-up Tucson mobile mask event that will take place the following day, on Thursday, September 24th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at the William M. Clement Center, also at 8155 East Pointiana Drive. And we have our Ward four virtual town hall series on September 30th at 5:30 to 6:30. This time, it's going to be a TMC RingCon update on the expansion of their healthcare facility out in Ward four, adding some additional healthcare services much needed to the Ward four area. So you can find more information about that at tucsonaz.gov/wardfour. That is my update.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Kozaczek? All righty, so on to item four.
City managers report summary of current events.
City manager's communication number 296 dated September 22nd is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow the city manager to report on current events. Mr Manager?
Mayor, I just wanted to follow up Councilman Lee's comment about the mask-up event. So far, we've given out over 4,000 masks through our mobile unit. So that's again, trying to make an impact. We've done most of it through rec centers around Tucson. So we're really pleased with our ability to respond to that. So that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr City Manager. Item five.
Liquor license applications. Report from city manager.
City manager's communication number 297 dated September 22nd is received into and made part of the record. Mr Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
Yeah, and the thing means liquor license agenda. Under item five B, we have five requests for new license, one request for sampling privileges. Under item five D, we have one request for agent change acquisition of control. Staff has indicated that all the applicants are in compliance with city requirements. An appropriate motion would be to forward items five B 1 through 6 and D 1 to the state liquor board with a recommendation of approval.
May I have a motion, please?
Yep, so moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item six.
Call to the audience.
At this time, the public is allowed to address the mayor and council on any issue except for items scheduled for a public hearing at this meeting. Speakers are limited to three-minute presentations. Call to the audience is scheduled to last for 30 minutes. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, individual council members may ask the city manager to review the matter, ask the matter be placed on a future agenda, or respond to criticism made by speakers. However, the mayor and council may not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during call to the audience. At this time, I will please ask the speakers to to not go over their three-minute presentations. Please do not interrupt other speakers and keep yourself on mute until you are called on. With that, I'd like to start with Connie Brownock.
Just here, Your Honor.
Good evening, and thank you so very much. Yes.
Thank you, Connie. We can't hear you. We can't hear you, Connie, but it's a bit low. So if you, if you're low. So if you're on the phone, you could get a little closer, or if you're on your computer.
Very good, very good.
That's better.
Is that better?
That's better. That's better. Go ahead. Of course.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to thank the mayor and council for giving me the opportunity to speak about my beloved A-Mountain, which is one of Tucson's treasures. And I just have a problem statement that I just wanted to present, and I've noticed that, you know, since the pandemic, and the beautiful renovations, and you have lots of pedestrian and bike traffic before 11 o'clock now, and it's closed on Monday, which is, it's become very attractive to cyclist hikers and families. The problem is, is that it's still, of course, it's enjoyed by vehicular traffic after 11 until 8 p.m. Then, there is excessive amounts of trash being thrown out, primarily of car windows, of meals, and bottles, and lots of alcohol. Evidence of illegal drug use to include hypodermic needles and nitrous oxide cartridges, copious amounts of beer cans, bottles, and other, primarily beers, but also some other liquor bottles, and there's, as you I'm sure well know, all that well know, there's broken glasses just proliferate throughout the park. As some of my fellow hikers and bikers, we put a little group together under the umbrella of the wonderful Tucson Clean and Beautiful, and we started cleaning it up. Some of the, my concerns are, here's the proposed strategies would be to temporarily close it to vehicular traffic, and this with a sign on the gate to alert visitors and vehicles the importance of proper disposal of litter and consequences for inaction in public. Item two would be a public awareness campaign to promote litter-free Tucson. We, I thank you for declaring a climate emergency. I do believe litter is, not only does it contribute to, it's an eyesore, but it's also, it's a fire hazard, it's hazardous to wildlife, and it lowers our morale. I mean, I love our city. And also adult probation, maybe if, once that the pandemic will allow them to provide assistance and continued volunteer support through Clean and Beautiful. And I've seen many police officers come and go, and I know that they are providing support.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, they are providing support. We might need more police presence in the evening to reduce illegal drug use and excessive consumption of alcohol. So with that being said, I just wanted to raise awareness about, as a citizen, about my concerns regarding one of Tucson's treasures, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I will just send over the photographs of the hypodermic needles and slides to your offices so you can all see what I put together. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Connie. Appreciate your voice. Roxy Valenzuela?
Doesn't appear that she's on, Your Honor.
Allison Solomon?
She's on.
Allison, you might have to press star six to unmute yourself. We can hear you a little bit choppy, but we can hear you.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Allison Solomon. I'm the Executive Director of Metropolitan Pima Alliance, and we're located at 2 East Congress Downtown. I would just like to speak in favor of the renewal of the Central Business District. It is a wonderful economic development tool that the city can go on ahead and utilize to incentivize the type of development it wants to see. Thus far, the majority of the projects have been done by local developers, and this tool really does allow for the type of development we'd like to see in the urban core. The type of development supports multimodal transportation, which is one of the key items in the Move Tucson Plan, and also supports our streetcar, which, as you mentioned during study session, we did heavily invest in as a community. So I encourage you all to continue to allow the utilization of this tool by our local development community, and we fully support looking at how this program benefits everybody in the community, and we are happy to engage in those conversations. So thank you for the time and the opportunity, and I appreciate all of your service.
Thank you, Allison. Wesley Tolliver?
Yes, can you?
Yes, you're a little choppy, but we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, and I will be brief. I had written to each of you about the conditions of our streets, and Transportation reached out to me, which I appreciate, but I found out some things that were shocking to me, which is that three out of four of our streets are in a failed condition. Not a poor condition, a failed condition. Seventy percent, almost three out of four. I also found out that our tax dollars that go into the general fund are not being used, from transportation, are not being used to fix our streets. My tax money should fix my streets. That's an emergency. If three out of four of our streets are not in a poor condition but in a failed condition, we should be talking about that. We should be fixing it. So I really would implore the city council to look at what we can, where we can move money from, because there shouldn't be very much that's more important than our streets, because they're the foundation for everything else. And I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you so much for your time. Janelle Riggs?
I don't see her on, Your Honor.
Alrighty. Glenda Avalos?
Yes.
Glenda Avalos, you might have to press star six to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
We can. Go ahead. Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Glenda Avalos, and I have been blessed to serve the Barrio Libre South Tucson community for over 15 years through the Salvation Army. Currently, I serve this community through Casa Miria. I have three children who are all born and raised in Tucson. They all attended or have graduated from the Tucson Unified School District. I live in south part of town. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the attention that you're going to give me. As we discussed the CBD, we can go through many terms that I probably wouldn't understand, but I do understand people. Mayor and Council, you're in a position to bless many, not just a selective few. The needs of Tucson, its community, its barrio, its people, go beyond structures. The underlying issues have to be addressed in order to move forward together without leaving anyone behind. This will allow us to build Tucson from the bottom, and together we will reach the top. During this time of COVID that has deeply affected many, I myself have lost my beautiful mother to it, having her life end so tragically was life-changing. Knowing that so many have experienced their own loss through work, their businesses, and of course, their loved ones. It just seems so reckless that business of this type will continue as usual during its uncertain times, where we definitely, more than ever, do not know what the future holds for our city. The people needing your representation the most ask of you to acknowledge them. Our barrios are not slummed or blighted. They are at home, our inheritance for generations to come. Mayor and Council, please include us. Do not exclude us in the future of Tucson. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Glenda. Karen Green?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Manager. My name is Karen Green. I live in the Dunbar Spring neighborhood, and I'm a founding member of the Barrio Neighborhood Coalition. First, I would like to thank you for reinstating call to the audience. I think it's an important part of a participatory government that is by and for the people. I'm here tonight because I'm concerned about your plans for the Central Business District, CBD, and your continuing use of G-Plats as an incentive for developers. The only reason for a CBD at all is so you can bestow G-Plats to a developer. Of the 22 G-Plats that have been awarded, three have gone to student housing projects, two of these developers being from out of town. Four have gone to hotels. Seven have gone for apartments or townhomes, either luxury or market rate, with one location at a rate of $2,300 per month for a one-bedroom. Five went to businesses, one went to the Rialto block, one went to GP Annex, where is the food court and bowling alley, by the way, and one went to an office project that brought a branch of El Rio Health Services to a neighborhood whose residents can afford to go elsewhere for their medical needs. Many of these projects have brought about gentrification and displacement in the neighborhoods and barrios surrounding downtown. This topic is of enough concern that you recreated the Commission on Equitable Housing and Development with a focus on preventing displacement. Why would it be a good idea to continue doing this kind of thing, and how can you still call these areas blighted? At the September 9th Mayor and Council meeting, Councilmember Kozaczek talked about needing to be sure that there is accountability in place before a G-Plat is awarded. That's one of the concerns that BNC has been talking about for years now. Councilmember Cunningham mentioned something about needing to actually look at the G-Plat. Does that mean council members haven't been paying attention and just voting along with the crowd? The Packet Mayor and Council were given to look at before this meeting had many photos in it. My favorite picture included in this report was one of a vacant lot with a lonely bus stop with no shade covering and a buckled upside lock. I realize you were trying to show the vacant lot, but what I saw was a service area the city has neglected and not invested in for many years. This area does not need luxury apartments nor another hotel. It needs resources for current residents and businesses. I am hopeful that most, if not every, one of you has read Lydia Otero's book, La Caie. Everything she describes, from places being labeled blight to backroom deals, to people in power ignoring people being impacted, is exactly what is happening again right now. It would be nice if we did not make the same mistakes again. Stop using the CBD and stop giving away our city through G-Plats. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Karen. I'm going to go back and see if some people that I called are here with us. I have Roxy Valenzuela scheduled to speak.
Yes, she's on.
Is she, is she on?
Yes, she's on.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Hi, Roxy. Hi, Roxy. We can hear you. You have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Roxy. I live in South Park, an area the city has falsely declared is slum and blighted, and I just want to talk about community needs. Where you see low property values and poverty, I see the injustices of urban renewal. Where you see rundown buildings, I see proud families struggling against years of governmental indifference and those laws that are meant to favor predatory developers. You hold out the carrot of community benefits agreements, but you fail to notice how shriveled that carrot actually is. A few more bushes planted around a business or discounted room rates at a hotel are only designed to benefit the developer. Asking residents to negotiate agreements to high-powered attorneys when those residents are struggling to pay their property taxes is like asking them to wrestle alliance with their hands tied behind their back. If you were really going to do a benefits agreement that was meaningful, you'd have substantial things like affordable housing, emergency rental assistance, home repair programs, bus passes for all residents, and emergency property tax payment assistance. Overall, the solution to the gentrification caused by the G-Plat cannot be cured by PUNI, Community Benefit Agreement. Plus, there is no accountability to make sure that the developers do what they said they were going to do. Therefore, a moratorium on G-Plats is necessary at this time. As I recall, in 2008, when the Rio Nuevo project committee held a meeting for residents, then Councilmember Regina Romero promised to protect the diversity of downtown. She stated that the city of Tucson has a long history, and we need to remember this history and not repeat the mistakes we have made in the past. We, the residents of the barrio, will remember how you vote today and who you actually choose to represent. We ask you to support our barrios, that the giveaways, and the slum designation, and the CBD. Thank you.
Thank you. Trish Muir?
Not on, Your Honor.
Let me try Janelle Riggs again.
Not on, Your Honor.
Michael Geimann?
Yes.
Hello, Mayor Romero.
Hi, how are you, Michael? We can hear you. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much, Mayor Romero, and members of the Tucson City Council. Appreciate your time this evening. My name is Michael Geimann, Vice President of the Tucson Metro Chamber, and I am a city resident. I do want to start by thanking Mayor Romero for bringing the 15% cap on restaurant and food delivery fees to the study session on September 9th. This is an important issue and something that continually comes up during our monthly, well, and sometimes weekly, Restaurant Advisory Council discussions. We look forward to working with you on this issue, and we appreciate the positive comments from the council during that study session. I would like to now ask the mayor and council to support the renewal of the Central Business District on tonight's agenda. I appreciate the comments during the study session this afternoon and the support you all expressed for keeping this tool in the toolbox. Without the renewal of the CBD, we cannot even consider economic development tools to compete in what is a very competitive environment. I know tonight's vote is only to renew, but I also want to at least address the benefits that G-Plat has provided the city, because while the CBD is the mechanism, the G-Plat is the actual tool, and cities in Arizona do not have very many tools at their disposal. The discussion pointed out that the G-Plat has been used 90% of the time by local developers. Local developers who are just as much a part of this community as anyone else and are putting their time, money, and resources into improving our community. And those improvements can be physically seen in the revitalization of our downtown, something the council has identified as a priority and has worked hard to advance through your support of Rio Nuevo legislation and financial allocations to the Tucson Downtown Alliance partnership, sorry. I also want to bring up my time and experience with Sun Corridor, because I think it's pertinent to this. They actually had another announcement today, believe it or not, with a manufacturer that have advanced seals and alloys choosing to expand their operations in Tucson. So congratulations to them. But during my many discussions with site selectors and corporate executives when I was there, working on potential company expansions or relocations, the top reason companies select regions is based on the talent they can access in those markets. Always starts with talent. But if talent is equal among multiple jurisdictions, they move to other factors, which typically include incentives, which I agree are sometimes somewhat of a necessary evil. We wish we didn't have to resort to them, but if we don't, we will simply lose out to other communities. G-Plat has been a valuable incentive. Should we take the time to make modifications to address issues specific to our community? Absolutely. We should spend the next few months to examine those necessary changes, as long as it's not changed too much to the point where we can no longer call it an incentive. We have an economic development tool that has been supported by mayor and council for eight years and passes the state law litmus test. When we have such a tool that encourages downtown revitalization and grows wealth in our community, we should do everything in our power to keep it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Michael. Cesar Aguirre?
Not on, Your Honor.
Cynthia Fabian?
I don't show her, Your Honor.
Randy Dorman?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Okay, now we can. Hi, Randy. You have three minutes.
Hi. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Randy Dorman. I'm an owner of R+R Develops, a local real estate development company at 990 East 17th Street with a focus on infill development since 2002, when we developed the Ice House Law. Our most recent project, The Trinity, in the West University neighborhood, was awarded a G-Plat. So I speak with firsthand knowledge of developing downtown, developing a project in a beloved historic neighborhood, and going through the process of receiving a G-Plat in the Central Business District. A thriving downtown is critical for the economic and cultural success of our region, and developing infill projects in the downtown area is challenging and expensive, but it's also one of the most sustainable ways to develop. As a community, we have very few tools at our disposal to facilitate the development we need to create the we need to create the Tucson we want. And the G-Plat is by far the most important one there is. It is absolutely the difference between projects that we want to happen being constructed, and especially by small local developers. Because what happens is that land and construction costs in downtown Tucson are high, and we can't get the rents here to get a good enough return to get a bank to loan and investors to invest in our projects. So smaller local developers like us can't get projects downtown financed without the G-Plat, and The Trinity would not have happened without it. The Trinity was on what was a vacant, underutilized parking lot that was owned by a church paying no taxes. And like all G-Plat recipients, we went through a thorough analysis that demonstrated that the direct financial benefits to the community was greater than the benefit to us, and the indirect benefits to the community, including jobs created, were many multiples of the benefit to us. And after the eight years, we'll be paying property taxes on a multimillion-dollar building instead of an empty parking lot. So please remember that the G-Plat can benefit big and small developments alike, but especially small developers who don't have established funding streams they can call on. If we eliminate the G-Plat, we'll make it so much harder to build the housing this community needs, all kinds of housing, including affordable housing. Because the G-Plat can be an important complement to other affordable housing programs in creating the affordable housing we need. There is so much misinformation and misunderstanding being passed around about CBDs and G-Plats, but the benefit's been profound. So as we head into economically uncertain times, we will need the G-Plat more than ever. So I respectfully ask you to please support the renewal of the CBD so that our community continues to have the tools it needs to grow responsibly and vibrantly. And thank you so much for the thought and the care that you're putting into this.
Thank you, Randy. We appreciate your voice. Cynthia Fabian.
No, Your Honor.
All righty. So that was the end of our call to the audience. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot one. Josh Campbell.
Hello.
Hi, Josh, we can hear you.
Shall I tell him? He's sorry.
Hello.
You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Good evening to you, Honorable Mayor and members of council. Thanks for giving me a couple minutes tonight. This is Josh Campbell, again representing the Tucson Firefighters Association. And on behalf of the over 600 firefighters that I represent, I just wanted to take a moment this evening to thank the city manager for working so diligently alongside Mayor Romero on the recommendation today regarding COVID-19 relief pay for eligible city employees. As we all know, the epidemic has affected each of us in a different way, but it certainly impacted the daily operations of our firefighters. With so many exposures to the daily virus and the added stress and constant state of awareness, it's certainly taken its toll on our members. I certainly do appreciate the recognition of this added workload by the city manager and Mayor and Council and the risks of the exposure that our members have faced. I am fully supportive of the item, and I'm very grateful for the Mayor and Council's support today to the recommendation. Thank you again for all you guys do for the community. The work you guys put in is certainly not lost on me, and I do appreciate the support that you have shown the employees of the city of Tucson. That's all I had tonight, and I'll yield the remainder of my time. Meanwhile, have a good night.
Thank you so much, Josh. Really appreciate it. We move on to Item Seven on the agenda.
Consent Agenda Items A through M.
Reports from the city manager on the consent agenda are received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read the consent agenda.
Get on the Seamy's Consent Agenda. Item A is Approval of Minutes. Item B is Tucson Code Amendmenting Chapter 22, Article 5, Group Insurance and Medical Health Plans, Repeating Ordinance 11292. This item will be considered separately. Item C is Approval of Involuntary Court Judgments for Fiscal Year 18 and 19. This item has been continued at the request of staff. Item D is An Agreement with the United States Geological Survey for Monitoring Aquifer Storage Change and Land Surface Evaluation Change. Item E is a Financial Participation Agreement with Tucson Clean and Beautiful for Management of Tucson's Waters Greens Stormwater Infrastructure Mini Grants Program. Item F is an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Arizona Board of Regents, Southwest Institute for Research on Women, for Participation in a Youth Homelessness Demonstration Project. Item G is Parks and Recreation Approving Law of Stancia Land Exchange to Support Development of Robert Price Park. Item H is a Final Plan is 20038 Silver Lake Industrial Park Subdivisional Lots 1 through 4. Item I is Transportation Approval of Title 6 Service Equity Analysis for Major Service Changes to Suntran Route 22. Item J is a Grand Application to the Federal Transit Administration for Transit-Oriented Development Planning. Item K is an Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of South Tucson for Housing Choice Voucher Program. Item L is Award Redistricting Recreation of the 2020 Redistricting Advisory Committee. Item M is a Financial Participation Agreement with YWCA of Southern Arizona, Emerged Center Against Domestic Violence, Southern Arizona AIDS Foundation, and Youth on Their Own for the Cities We Are One, Somos Unoresiliencia Fund. That's the extent of the consent agenda.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Your Honor, I move that we pass and adopt all items A through M with the exception of B.
May I have a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
It's not you.
Yeah, I can hear you, Councilmember Vice Mayor.
I think.
Roger, can you hear me?
I think.
I can. Mayor, you froze. It looks like you're back on now.
All righty. It wasn't, it was, was it the Vice Mayor? Vice Mayor, I'm so sorry. I think it was my connection on my end.
I just wanted to comment both, I wanted to give on two of the items on the consent agenda. One of them, I wanted to congratulate Rick Price, Richard Price Park. I know he's been working on that. In fact, I talked to him about it this morning. And then the other one was, I wanted to thank, and I wanted to thank Mayor and Council for what we're doing for Youth on Their Own. It's, it's, I used to be on their board, and it's a really great, great thing.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Mix out the crews.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik.
Aye.
Mayor Romero.
Aye. A motion passes five zero. To be considered separately as Item B on the consent agenda, I wanted to just have a little bit of a conversation on this issue. It is Ordinance 11292, which is the Wellness Attendance Incentive. Basically, the incentive is to hand out $250 every six months of a fiscal year for employees not using sick leave. I absolutely understand that at this time of COVID-19 and in the pandemic, we want to discourage people from not wanting to use their sick, their sick pay. The current proposal suspends the Wellness Attendance Incentive indefinitely, though, and there are some labor unions that explicitly called out inclusion of the Wellness Attendance in their contracts. And so what I'd like to propose, instead of terminating the Wellness Attendance Incentive indefinitely, that we come back at this, at a similar point next year to determine whether or not it is safe to reinstitute the policy or to have labor unions, to give labor unions the opportunity to renegotiate in their contracts if they want to include the Wellness Attendance. So I'd like for my colleagues on the council to consider that we review the policy again next year and not make this indefinite policy change.
Your Honor, I'd like to move that we pass and adopt Item B from the consent agenda with the caveat that we return and review it next year in the month of, in the first meeting in the month of September.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. So are there any questions, any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, do we need a roll call or by voice vote?
You can do voice vote, Your Honor.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you so much for that consideration. Item Eight.
Public hearing proposed major bus service changes to Suntran Route 22. Hearing Resolution Number 23240.
City Manager's Communication 304, dated September 22nd, is received into and made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on proposed major service changes to Suntran Route 22. The public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. Mr. Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
No, Your Honor.
All righty. Hearing none. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is closed, and the motion passes five zero. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read Resolution 23240 by number and title only.
Resolution Number 23240 relating to transportation and mass transit authorizing and approving proposed major service changes to Suntran Route 22 Grande and setting an effective date.
What is the council's pleasure?
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmembers.
In the map, I understand that from the public hearings that Barranita had requested to be included in the service area for like this new, yeah, like micro, not micro mobility, I'm like blanking on the term, like micro transit. So I wanted to get clarification of whether or not it was being included.
Go ahead, Diana.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm gonna verify that for you, Councilmember Santa Cruz. I'm not 100%, but the map is pretty laid out, but I'm hoping that we can go back and make that adjustment.
Thank you, Diana. I know that, you know, these conversations have been, you know, started from our office back, and we're looking at other more efficient routes, you know, to include as well on the west side of the freeway. So thank you for all your work on that. And with that, like I move that we accept the resolution.
So there is a motion to pass and adopt Resolution 23240. Is there a second?
Yes, Your Honor, I'll second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's go to roll call.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik.
Aye.
It's Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Romero.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. What I'm going to do now is I will push Item 14, which is the financial update, so that we can discuss it now. So the City Manager's Communication Number 316, dated September 22nd, is received into and made part of the record. I will open the floor to our city manager, Mr. Ortega.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for your patience as we through this. So I've asked Joyce to make the presentation. Joyce Gardner, CFO. And again, I do have in there a recommendation for $6 million allocation from the general fund for the Public Safety Communications retrofit project. I did send you a note saying that it is not absolutely necessary that you vote on it if you're not comfortable. We can bring it back to you on the sixth, but it does dovetail with some of the conversations we had earlier. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joyce. Joyce?
Thank you, Mr. Ortega. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Hopefully, I can understand how this works. Let's see here. Here we are. All right, and we will, and hopefully you're able to see that.
Yes, we are seeing it very.
Oh, very good. Thank you. All right, so this is an update not only of the general fund, we're also giving you a brief update on the Highway User Revenue Fund. The reason for that is because of the pandemic, and people aren't driving as far, they're not filling up their tanks as much. There could be an impact to those revenues, and we'd like to keep an eye on that for this fiscal year. We also have some refinancing or refundings that we're doing on some certificates of participation and water revenue bonds. And really, I really wanted to set the stage with Mayor and Council about the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, PSPRS. I think this is an opportune time to talk about some options with that, and as I go through the presentation, you'll be able to see what we could be doing. So we're in just some unprecedented time, and I have to tell you, I've talked with not only my peer cities like Phoenix and Tempe. It has really been a difficult time to forecast the revenues on a certain basis. So we do have a revenue strategy, which is actually used in our collection data. We look at available information from the market, listen to Dr. Hammond's from the Eller College, and we, we look at certain trends that are occurring. We're definitely seeing a change in behavior. And as you recall, our revenue estimates for fiscal year 2021, we actually recommended a 15% reduction in our revenues for the first half and then a 2% growth for the second half of the fiscal year. Well, I have to tell you that the growth is something we weren't expecting. So this is actually, when we look at our sales taxes, our sales taxes actually have these different sectors in them. So you'll be able to see the peaks and valleys as we normally do, and because the retail portion of the sales tax is such a larger number than everything else, I broke it down into two slides so you can see the details on the other sectors. But you can see just during the months how it went down into February, we had a peak in March, and then as the pandemic hit us, the sales taxes went down for retail, right? Now we're seeing to see this trend going up. So what's different? Well, it's really a behavior change because we've all learned how to go shopping with masks. We've learned how to use our different internet resources for our favorite stores to do grocery shopping. They'll bring it to you. You can go to different retail places, they bring it to you. So it's, it's not that they've stopped actually buying things, they actually are buying. Now, I'm gonna say this cautiously because we also know that the stimulus money is gone. People have already used it. The unemployment checks, as the mayor mentioned that earlier today, those dollars are going down. So we will probably see some impacts because people won't be able to buy as they were. We just have to keep a very close eye on it. So as I go into the next slide, you'll also see the big trends that are also occurring. So I wanted to like point out a few of them, which is definitely you can see our construction. That did not decrease. It's actually on the rise, and that's this like light blue area. We have, that's our prime contractors, and then you have the black, which is a different construction area. But they are trending upward, and that is a good, good sign here. Now, interesting enough, too, we see an increase in our utility sales tax. So that's what I call burnt orange. You know, I grew up. So that's what I call burnt orange. You know, I grew up a long time ago and burnt orange was the thing. But that's this large increase here that occurred in, just in August. So we'll continue again to watch that. If things start to go more flat, we'll definitely be reporting to you at the next session. So this is where we are with our general fund, the unrestricted portion. So as you'll be able to see on our adopted budget, it was $205 million. Our actuals are 32, almost $33 million, which is 16% of what we adopted. Now, if we were to do like a linear to figure out, well, where should we be? Normally, on a linear basis, that means two twelfths for the fiscal year, you would be at about 17%. So it appears that we're right on in a linear fashion, but we know that our sales tax is not linear. There will be an increase during the holiday season. At least that's historically what we see. But of course, this is an unprecedented year, so we'll, we'll actually see what happens during that timeframe. Now, where we are seeing reductions in revenue are in our hospitality area. So when I talk about hospitality, that is with our hotels, motels, a little bit of restaurants there. So that's where the revenues are actually decreasing the most. We also have some losses of charges for services, particularly with our parks and rec area. But then again, our planning development service fees are phenomenal, and that's part of the construction industry. It's also, we have more permits that we ever had before, even during the last boom in 2008, during a month. Now, what that shows is people are doing a lot of home improvements, which is good. They're, they're actually adding some value to, to their residents. So what we're, we are seeing now, we've collected almost $80 million for the year, or 15% of our adopted budget. Now, our operating expenses, we are down in some of our operating expenses. That does have to do with vacancy savings. We are just making selective hiring, so we're looking at every single position that we are hiring. Is it still warranted? Is there a different way to do it? Since we are working differently, we have to reassess again what each position does. I did want to show that there was a purchase of the property, which we, Mayor and Council actually approved on June 30th. We settled on that property. It was $690,000, and that is the property on St. Mary's. Now, debt service, there's not much yet for debt service because our two major debt service payments are actually in December and June. And then we have the transfers to other funds. I will tell you that the transfers to other funds, this is for the transit system, for SunLink, for the convention center. And then we do have a small amount we budgeted for, for development impact fees. This assumption to transfers to other funds doesn't include any increases on what Diana talked about today with the transit system of the revenue loss from fares. Now, in the highway user fund, again, you'll see that our state shared revenues are right in alignment with budget. Our permits and inspection fees are up, and all other revenues are a little down, but that's, that's okay right now because what that signifies to me and what that is, is our interest earnings on the cash. So the highway user fund doesn't have as much cash on hand because of the big debt service payment they made in June, but they will build up the cash over the course of the fiscal year. Operating expenditures are down. Again, that's mainly from personnel savings. Debt service, the amount that you see here at $694,000 is for the LEDs. Their major debt service, again, that will take place in December and in June. That's on the street and highway user revenue bonds. They have done some of their capital projects, and the transfers to other fund in the adopted budget, that again is for development impact fees. So I wanted to touch on the public safety retirement system because I think this is an important conversation for us to have at this time. We've been paying into the public safety pension system, and as you are able to see, our contributions continually rise. We did in fiscal year 1718, we changed our amortization period from 19 to 29 years. But I think that given the market opportunities right now, we have some options to either keep at a level pace with where we are paying PSPRS now or to actually have some cash flow savings for the future. So this graph is just historical. You can see that in fiscal year 10, it was $27.1 million total. We're now up to $75.8 million, and I can let you know that that is gonna continue to increase. I have a slide further on that is the estimated amount for the upcoming fiscal years. I did get that information from PSPRS itself. So here's where the real issue lies. We don't talk about this often because it's not on the radar as much for the general fund because of it being a governmental fund. But if you were to see this, if this, if the general fund were more like an enterprise fund, this would actually be on the balance sheet. Right now, our unfunded liability for PSPRS Combined Police and Fire is $1 billion. That's not gonna go away, and, and what that unfunded liability means is that there are not enough dollars within the fund itself to pay the costs related to the retirees. So Mayor and Council, you may remember that PSPRS came to talk to you a couple of years ago, and we discussed with them, you know, what some of the factors were that led to this unfunded liability. And there were several things that occurred. Their investment policy wasn't well done. They have changed that since. There were some built-in increases to the retirees' pension annually. There also, for the city of Tucson itself though, we have more retirees than we have actual employees paying into the system. So PSPRS did make some changes. There are three tiers in their pension system. We don't have as many in the third tier, so most of our employees that are paying into the system now are the tier one and tier two. So as we look at this unfunded liability, that unfunded liability is really based on, also on some actuary assumptions, that being what are the interest earnings that are gonna occur and the life expectancy of a retiree. So those factors play a lot in, in what this unfunded liability will be. They're gonna change those factors again, and I believe Vice Mayor Cunningham has said several times that the rate of return on their investments at 7.3% is unrealistic, that that doesn't really happen over the course of time. So they have, they are gonna be taking that into consideration, and when they do start to lower that assumption, it just means that our obligation will grow accordingly. So this is the graph I mentioned before, and you can see right now that in 22, fiscal year 22, we're going to be going from almost $76 million up to $80, and it just continually steadily grows until 2046 at $241 million. Well, you may think that by 2046, it may be possible that that would still be under 10% of the general fund revenues, but I tend to think that it's probably gonna be more in the range between 17% and 20% of the total revenues. So you can see that, you know, this is what we're, we can be expected to be paying in the future years. I mentioned before that there are gonna be, there are actuary changes coming. There were proposed to the board recently. I did have a voice in that along with Phoenix. We did ask them for some leniency and not make these changes all at once because of the huge dollar impact it would have to our general funds in the upcoming years. So the proposals that actually ended up being made is to do a layered amortization structure and to kind of think about this as a layering. So what would happen is you would take the results of a fiscal year in your pension fund, and you would amortize that for, let's say, 20 years. Then you would take the next year, and you get those results, and then you would amortize that, and so on. So it's a real structured approach. I would like to be able to model that. I haven't been able to do that yet. But as soon as we can, I'd like to see how that plays out for the future. The other is, is that they are gonna take a payroll growth assumption, which they're gonna take from a 3.5%. So what they assume is that our payroll is growing by that percentage every year. That's not been realistic. Actually, the payroll growth is anywhere between 1 and 2%. So this is where we were able to ask them to come in with a phased in, so the impact isn't high for us in the upcoming years, and they are lowering it from 3.5 to 3%. So we will see an annual cost increase and an increase to our unfunded liability. But the intent with these changes then is to stabilize at about year seven. So as I mentioned, there are some options that we have right now. Given the market conditions, I think there's an opportunity here that we should consider. You know, we can continue to pay the actuary amount each year. It will grow to that $241 million. You know, our funds are not that well-funded. They're under 35% funded, which means you don't have as much principal to invest to get those earnings. So another option that we could do is we could issue taxable certificates of participation. So these would actually be pension obligation bonds. So our intent with this would be to issue the bonds where the debt service would be flat. There are potential cash flow earning or savings that we would gain from that. We are modeling different structures here, and I have been working with a team, not only with our financial advisor, Bill Davis, but we have investment firms that are also helping us, and they're part of the team to look at what this would look like for the city of Tucson. You would borrow at an interest rate less than the average earnings of the plan. So if you'll remember, when we went for our general obligation bonds, that was 1% money that we borrowed. So if we could borrow, let's say between a 2% and 3% range, but we're earning somewhere between 4% and 5% on those dollars, we're ahead of the game. So we are doing a lot of modeling on this. I won't have that modeling done until later this week, but I certainly would love to share that with you. The other thing that we can also do is do a dedicated sales tax. So there are some jurisdictions that have done that. They've gone out to the voters and asked for a dedicated sales tax. There may also be other options depending on what happens with the November election, but that's, that's to be seen. Because you could take the dedicated sales tax and not only put it into the pension fund, but we could actually borrow money and then use the dedicated sales tax to pay the debt service. So on October 6th, we would like to bring back to Mayor and Council a strategic framework for further discussion on the pension obligation bonds.
Joyce, before you move on to the water revenue, I did see the Vice Mayor's hand up, and I just wanted to make sure that we clarified for the record and the public that the PSPRS system is managed by the state of Arizona. And that the, it's the funded ratio is at, you said about 35%?
About that.
And that has been the case for some time now. It stayed in the 30s. There's, there hasn't been a movement up in terms of the funded ratio. And so in comparison to the Mayor and Council and City of Tucson TSRS system, which is our pension system, we have a funded ratio of about, can I say 70%, 74%?
It's over, yes, yes, Mayor, you're correct.
What is the percentage?
About 74.
74%. So the management of the TSRS system, our retirement system managed by the city of Tucson is 74% funded ratio versus the PSPRS. Arizona State Managed System has stayed at 30 to 34% funded ratio for the past 10 years. Can you clarify, Joyce, what the option is this election season? Because I know that the, that the, I believe it's a 207 initiative, which is the Smart and Safe Adult Use Marijuana Initiative, has a portion in there to use some of those sales taxes on adult use to be able to use it for, for the PSPRS system. Can you talk a little bit more about it if you, if you do have that information?
Well, that, thank you, Mayor. That is actually the initiative that I was thinking of that could be a potential to put into the plan. You know, what we don't know is how much the sales tax will be. So for example, in Colorado, when they passed it, they thought it would be a lot of money, and it ended up not being as much as you might have imagined. So I think it depends on exactly the type of plan the city of Tucson would put together as to those dispensaries within our city limits and what that sales tax would look like. So we would have to bring back further information on that. The other thing is, is depending on when that sales tax would go into effect, definitely that's a, a timing issue on when you put dollars in. So I think that's the dedicated sales tax that came to mind.
So we have no idea how much that possible sales tax would, would generate for this city of Tucson?
I do not know.
Okay, all righty. I do see the Vice Mayor's hand up, and I, I believe that Councilmember Kozachi's hand is up as well.
So Joyce, there's probably a, if we're gonna borrow, if we're gonna issue a cop, and by the way, if we're gonna issue a cop, I want it to be at about 2 and 1/2%. We gotta do, we gotta get, once we get over about 3 and 1/2, eh, you know, it, it, it's, I don't know if I wanna issue extra debt on top of that and have that extra payment, but we can probably game it out if we front-load it, but we also put some one-time cash in. We dedicate the marijuana money if we get it, and this is the thing that's kind of the, the elephant in the room. There's about 15 other cities that are in the same boat we are. Matter of fact, we're probably more over the camel hump compared to some of the other jurisdictions because we hit the brunt of this at a horrible time. So I'm kind of thinking that I really wanna see what the state ultimately decides to do because they're gonna be, the state's gonna have to do some assistance. These, these Maricopa County jurisdictions aren't, aren't gonna stand for this. So I just see that kind of coming, that at some point, the, the state's gonna wanna try to do some. And I don't wanna wait on them. I mean, I agree that we've gotta take action now, but I'm kind of thinking if we do like the triple hybrid, if we wait till November and do like a triple hi- hybrid, then, and front, and front-load the debt. So what you're saying is we're gonna make our PSPRS payment, and then we're gonna make this cops payment, but it should be less than the, it should flatten to about $85 million a year or something of that nature. Is that, that's, that's how I'm understanding this. Is that, am I on the right track here?
You're on the right track. The actual dollars though, we haven't, we don't have that scenario yet because it is a strategy on, on how, on what this looks like. Because then you also have to decide too, is how much goes into fire, how much goes into police. I mean, there's many different options here, and that's what we would like to bring back to Mayor and Council.
Well, remember, you've got that cliff. You've got that $180 million cliff from 2046 to 2049. You've got that $180 million cliff from 2046 to 2047 that you can build into your amortization. So if we go 28 years or 29 years out and we put that 180 back in to the, whatever amount it is, 80 plus 85 plus 95 plus 80, all the way up, which I think you said was about $1 billion. If we put that 180 in, put a little one time, put the bond in, we, we should do pretty well as long as we're making the 7 and 1/2%. The thing is, it's funny, is that eight years ago when I said there was no way we were going to make 7 and 1/2%. I was mad because I just watched the meltdown happen. And I'd watched literally friends of mine and relatives of mine have their entire IRA wiped out. And I was like, and I was watching Bernie Madoff go to jail. And I was like, there's no fricking way you're going to, well, lo and behold, over the last eight years, you probably made 7 and 1/2%. The thing is, is that, one, that's never guaranteed. And two, if we were making 7 and 1/2%, how come we didn't stabilize more? How much will we pay in commissions to these guys? I mean, I, it's driving me nuts that our fund manager, our fund manager got paid the last seven years, big time. I want to know how our fund didn't stabilize. We got to go to the PSPRS board and be like, look, we get it, but your fund manager got paid. And we're still at 35% even though the stock doubled over seven years. That's bull crap, man. So that's why, those are where my frustrations lie. And I just wanted to bet them now so that when I really get hardcore and want to ambush the fund manager, he's ready for it, she's ready for it, whoever it is.
Thank you, vice mayor. I know that Steve has his hand up. Go ahead, Steve.
So this entire refinancing, not refinancing, but this entire PSPRS goat rodeo that we've been watching for the last six years, it really doesn't need, we, we have to, we have to, we can't wait on the November election necessarily. We, we have got a market that's in a condition right now that is about as prime as it's going to get for a major restructuring of this debt. Every basis point that moves is significant dollars. So what level of unfunded are you thinking about? Because it's cash flow and it's immediate cash flow. And it's cash flow that we could use in the next fiscal year if we act quickly enough, knowing that we have a significant financial problem ahead of us in the immediate future. So I, and maybe it's premature to ask that question, right? So maybe I'll just leave it at this, that we need to maximize whatever opportunity we have right now because the market isn't, isn't going to be here for long. That's, I guess that's my overall point.
I think we need several options in terms of what we are going to finance. Is it going to be a four year? Is it going to be one year at a time? I think that we need to be able to have options so that we can make the best and most informed decisions. And if you have tonight, Joyce, maybe you can give us a preview of what you're thinking.
Certainly, Madam Mayor. So what we've been talking about, and I think what some people can be a little nervous when we look at, when you're looking at a billion dollars, we're not looking at financing a billion dollars. But you are looking for an amount that is going to be substantial enough. So you are getting those investment earnings. As it is now, if you think about our, our funded piece, it's like having $10 in the bank rather than having $100,000 in the bank, right? So your interest earnings are going to be different. So it will be substantial. We are modeling with $500 million. That, that's where our model would be. We also know that there, in anything that you do, when you do a debt and you do something like this, there is potential for risk. So we're, we, there's actually a strategy to mitigate that. And that's what I really want to bring back to council, those ideas and those thoughts.
Excellent. Any other questions on this particular piece of the presentation? All right, go ahead, Joyce.
All right, thank you. And, you know, and a bit of good news, because the market is so good, we are going to be refinancing or refunding some bonds. The water revenue bonds is actually on the agenda tonight from mayor and council to approve this refunding. We're estimated to save almost $4 million over the life of, of the several series of bonds. The certificates of participation, we did ask that to go to the next session. That won't change the outcome of the refunding. There were just some documents that weren't what they should have been. So we pulled that, we asked for a little bit more time to fix those documents. But we're looking for a savings of $1.6 million for those COPs. So I think as council member Kozachek says, this market is so good right now, it's, it's worth our taking the time to take these opportunities. And for that, any other questions?
Any additional questions from my colleagues?
All right, I can, I can talk to Joyce and the manager offline. This is, this, this is pretty, this is actually really exciting. It's a really good opportunity for us. Joyce, congratulations on the original thinking. This is, this is, this is how you do it, right on.
Yeah, that's, that's very, very good. Will you be bringing this, this option for the PSPRS system, Joyce, for a study session discussion or for a regular agenda item discussion?
We'll be bringing it as a study session item on October 6th.
Thank you. My question is, we've been looking at and updating the five-year forecast of the budget. And it's a work in progress, as we all know. And one of the things that I'd like to include, if, if it's possible, and I know you can do it, Joyce, I'd like to make sure that we make all cash carry forward from previous years available and listed in our five-year forecast. That is something that, that is not on the, on the, on the five-year forecast. Or you might want to put it as well in a line item underneath the forecast numbers.
Understood.
Okay, cool. Very cool, very cool. That's all my comments. And I don't know if my colleagues would have additional commentary. All righty, well, hearing none, I think you did an excellent job, Joyce. We will go back to item nine on the regular agenda. Item nine, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you.
Zoning C92005 Kirby Lockhart House, East Lind Road, RX2 to HLRX2. City managers report ordinance adoption, ordinance number 11781.
City managers, communication number 305 dated September 22nd is received into and made part of the record. This is a request to designate the Kirby Lockhart House at 2240 East Lind Road as a historic landmark. The site is located approximately 630 feet from north of the intersection at Fort Lowell Road and North Jackson Avenue. The zoning examiner and staff recommend approval of the HLRX-2 zoning and adoption of the ordinance. Is the applicant or representative present in the meeting?
I am Damian Klinko, representing the Tucson Historic Preservation Foundation and the property owner.
Thank you, Mr. Klinko. Are you agreeable to the proposed requirements?
We are.
Excellent. Thank you so much for your presence and for moving this recommendation forward. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read ordinance 11781 by number and title only.
Ordinance number 11781 relating to zoning, amending zoning district boundaries in the area located approximately 630 feet north of the intersection at Fort Lowell Road and North Jackson Avenue at 2240 East Lind Road in case C92005 Kirby Lockhart House Historic Landmark, RX2 to HLRX2 and setting an effective date.
What is the council's pleasure?
So mayor, I've been in touch with Damian and the ward, this is in Ward 3. Working with Damian with the Ward 3 office and council member Durham. They've done significant outreach on this and they're very comfortable in having us move this forward and begin the rezoning process to HL. So I'd make that motion.
I'll second. There's a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing, well, is that it? Mr. Klinko, did you raise your hand?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to thank the mayor and council. And I also wanted to thank Scott, Clark, John Beal and Jody Brown, who all helped move this quickly because of pending sale and interests of the owner wanting to do this to protect this piece of heritage. So thank you very much again for your continued support, mayor and council of these cultural resources.
You'll be sorry if the vote fails now.
Now that you've added pressure. Thank you so much for working on these very, very worthy projects. If there is no additional discussion, let's go to roll call.
Mayor O'Meara?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham? Mick Sampa Cruz? Mick Sampa Cruz? Mr. Kozachek?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Excellent. Ordinance 11781 passes by a vote of 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Klinko. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item 10.
Zoning C152003, establishing original city zoning for the Mission Road-Sindle Place Annexation District, County SH to City SH. Ordinance adoption, extension of the major streets and routes planned and scenic corridor zone, ordinance number 11783.
City managers, communication number 306 dated September 22nd is received into and made part of the record. This is a request to establish original city zoning within the Mission Road-Sindle Place Annexation District. The district includes approximately 1.92 acres located in an area roughly bounded by Irvington Place on the north, Mission Road east, and Sindle Place on the south. The zoning examiner and staff recommends approval of SH zoning and extension of the major streets and routes scenic overlay zone. Is the applicant or representative present? Mr. Clerk, do you see the applicant present?
No, your honor.
Mr. Clerk, do we, do we have someone that will accept the proposed requirements?
Your honor, I don't believe that this requires acceptance. This is just simply changing the original city zoning.
All righty, Mr. Rankin?
Honorable mayor, members of the council, the clerk is correct. This is actually to establish original city zoning, which will be the translational zoning. So I'm comfortable with us proceeding, even if we don't have an applicant to accept the conditions as presented.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Attorney. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read ordinance 11783 by number and title only.
Ordinance number 11783 relating to zoning, establishing original zoning in the area located in an area roughly bounded by Irvington Place on the north, Mission Road on the east, and Sindle Place on the south in case C152003. Mission Road-Sindle Place Annexation District, Heeman County, SH to City of Tucson, SH, together with the extension of the major streets and routes planned designation and scenic corridor zone overlay and setting an effective date.
What is the council's pleasure? I motion to per- Go ahead, council members.
Sorry, council member Lee, because it was in Ward 1, so I just felt like I had a-
No, you do. I saw you.
Yeah, I moved to proceed as recommended.
Second. So there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? For that, hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mayor O'Meara?
Aye.
Mr. Kozachek?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mick Sampa Cruz?
Aye.
Ordinance 11783 passes by a vote of 5-0. Item 11.
Finance refunding of water system revenue bond series 2020.
City managers, communication number 309 dated September 22nd is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read ordinance 11784 by number and title only.
Ordinance number 11784, an ordinance relating to finance, authorizing the finance director or chief financial officer of the city of Tucson, Arizona, to cause the sale and execution and delivery pursuant to an obligation indenture of water system revenue refunding obligations taxable series 2020, evidencing proportionate interest of the holders thereof in installment, in installment payments of the purchase price to be paid by the city of Tucson, Arizona, pursuant to a taxable series 2020 city purchase agreement, authorizing the completion, execution, and delivery with respect thereto of all agreements necessary or appropriate for the refinancing of costs of acquiring improvements to the storage, treatment, and distribution facilities of the water system of the city and related financing costs, including the delegation to the finance director or chief financial officer of certain authority with respect thereto and including with respect to such refinancing authorization of the execution and delivery of a depository trust agreement with respect to certain obligations to be refunded, authorizing the preparation and delivery of an official statement with respect to such series 2020 obligations, ordering the sale of such series 2020 obligations, authorizing the execution and delivery of a continuing disclosure undertaking with respect to such obligations, authorizing the finance director or chief financial officer to expend all necessary funds therefore and declaring an emergency.
Your honor?
Yes, Vice Mayor?
I want to just commend both the Water Department, Finance Department for working this out. We're going to save $3.85 million of the life of the bonds. This is what happens when you take advantage of a strong bond market. With that, I move that we pass and adopt 11784.
There is a motion. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. I just have one question. What is the expected interest rate for the refunding of these water bonds, Joyce?
Hi, Madam Mayor. The interest rate is not within the documents because we don't have them. What we look at is the net present value right now. We will have that interest rate once we go to market. But we know it's low enough in order to achieve the savings that we're looking for.
Right, it's low enough compared to the interest rate that we have now.
Right, those bonds right now for the water, they're between 4 and 5%. So we'll probably, we will get a lot, a lot less than that.
Okay, all righty. Well, thank you so much. So there's a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, let's go to a roll call. You're muted, Mr. Clerk, but I think you called me and I'm an aye.
Aye. Mick Sampa Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor O'Meara?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Ordinance 11784 passes by a vote of 5-0, I was going to say 7-0, 5-0. Item 12?
This is finance authorizing the sale of certificate of participation series 2020. Your honor, this item has been continued at the request of staff.
Item 13?
Economic initiatives renewal of the central business district, resolution 23246.
City managers, communication number 314 dated September 22nd is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read resolution 23246.
Resolution number 23246 relating to redevelopment, authorizing and approving the central business district.
What is the council's pleasure?
Your honor?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor?
I don't know whether I should start a discussion or make a motion for the purposes of discussion. I, I was inclined to vote to at least, or I was inclined to make the motion to, or support a motion, to extend the 10-year life of the business district tonight. And not only that, commit to some of the pieces that we outlined in the study session today. There's a few things that I wanted to say on the record if I was going to do that. And, you know, it, it isn't, I'm not sure, yeah.
Mr. Vice Mayor, before you move on, we just have to make sure that it is clear to the public that this is a renewal. that this is a renewal of the Central Business District, and it's Resolution 23246, just in case you want to refer to the resolution number with your motion.
So, and I will. I'm actually looking at it right now on my other computer. That's why I keep turning to the side, for those of you at home. I have another computer here with the agenda and my papers that I look at. Anyway, there's a few things here about G-plates, and I'll say this. Gentrification is a true thing. It is something that truly affects renters, especially in areas that are gentrified, where G-plates are. It really does. It affects them. Because what happens is that the property taxes go up. But in the state of Arizona, you're only allowed to raise the property tax assessment by 5% a year per taxpayer. So, your actual tax can only go up 5%. But the landlords, they don't have to do that. They get to adjust their rent based on their property value. And as a result, people who have rented for a long time, they catch the brunt of it. But I'll say on some other things, when it comes to gentrification, a lot of that is different market forces, different different kind of forces outside the spectrum. And though the G-plate can be considered part of that, it's a bit of red herring sometimes. I look at our G-plates, and I did some work this afternoon, and just in our current assessments, you're looking at, so, let's say we took the G-plates that have gone through. These are not the four that are still pending, but the ones that are done, and a new assessment has been made by the county assessor. We're going to collect over a 30-year period about $20 million in property taxes. And that includes school districts, and the Pima College District includes the county. We're also going to collect, or we collected hundreds of thousand dollars of impact fees, construction sales tax fees, permitting fees, all prior to that. And in some of the cases, we're collecting site-specific sales tax. So, the idea that it's a corporate giveaway, I'm not saying that there isn't merit to that. What I'm saying is that sometimes you got to look at the whole picture. And over a 30-year period, you're going to have a project, that if we don't do the project, we'll make $50,000 at the end of 50 years. We'll collect 1,700 bucks a year for 30 years, and we'll make $50,000. If we allow the G-plate to go through, that total goes up to $800,000 to the life of the project. And not only that, that includes the eight years of abatement. So, sometimes I think we do really well on these. And on the new builds, we do a little better. But on the rehabilitations, and especially on the historic preservation pieces, even though they didn't necessarily make as much money as we would have wanted, we did a good historic preservation project. So, I think there's some things about G-plates that are good. We don't know what the, we really don't know what's going to happen with our economy in the next year. We don't know what's going to happen in the next five years. There's always uncertainty in economic times, and we watched the meltdown a few years ago. My deal is this. We don't necessarily need to use the G-plate. And in a lot of cases, especially where we've used the G-plate in the last few years, we absolutely don't need to use it where it's been. It's kind of done its job, and those areas can stand up on their own. They are not letting, you're absolutely right, some of the speakers who said that. But even though we don't need to use the G-plate, we probably need to have it. We probably need to have it just in case. We may have situations where it wouldn't warrant use. And so, that's kind of what I'm struggling with here. But I think overall, it's been a good program, and it's added things, and it allows for investment in those neighborhoods. And maybe it hasn't allowed enough investment. And maybe that, the discussions with neighbors, it's not been as inclusive as it should have been. And I can't speak to that. I haven't, I don't have any G-plates in Ward Two. But I can say that, in talking to my colleagues, I feel that in each G-plate, they were really vigilant in trying to ensure that everyone had a voice as much as possible. I'll also say that some of the developers, these quote-unquote evil corporations and bad people, some of these are startups. Some of these are not big businesses. Some of these are choosing Tucson, like Mr. Carwash. They set up a national corporate headquarters here, one of the few. And so, these are the type of things we want for Tucson. And I don't want to be, I don't want to be insensitive to what the community is telling us. But at the same time, I think that this current version of the G-plate that we have, if we let it go and lose it, we won't have as much flexibility. And whatever G-plate we may decide in five years, because we decide we really need it, will be dictated more by the state. So, for me, I'm going to move that we renew to, that we at least renew the version of the G-plate. We suspend them until we get all the things that we're talking about at study session. But we do that on a case-by-case. There's obviously going to be, there could be a G-plate that comes up that really makes sense to the community and to the area, and presents a lot of opportunities for investment. So, I just want to throw caution. I can think of a project right now where, you know, there's possibilities of collecting over $135,000, $140,000 in in impact fees right off the bat. And that's more than what we're getting in property tax per year. That's more than what we'd get in property tax for the next 10 years. 20, excuse me. If my math's right, 100 years. So, I just want to kind of put that out there. Anyway, with that, I'm going to move that we renew the CBD and adopt Resolution 23246.
I'll second. There is a motion and a second, and I do see the hand, Steve's hand up. Go ahead, Steve.
Just point of clarification for Mr. Rankin. What we, all we are doing with this vote is extending the CBD for 10 years. The entire conversation we had this afternoon is a different set of conversations, correct?
That's correct. You're acting to renew the CBD prior to the deadline that was established by the state legislature, which is October 1st of this year. So, by renewing it, it does not foreclose the mayor and council from engaging in the public community engagement process that you've already directed with respect to the G-plate policies and/or any future expansions or revisions to the area of the CBD. It just preserves the existing district so that you can engage in that process going forward.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Rankin, there was additional direction that mayor and council gave earlier today during the study session. I think we had a very extensive conversation of how we all felt of the renewal, keeping the CBD as a tool in our toolbox. But we all expressed some input, and I believe we gave direction and voted on a motion with very specific direction on community engagement and looking at, making sure that we're looking at the map. I want to make sure that we put into the record and share with the community that direction. I don't know if you have the motion with you so that you can talk about, talk about it.
So, mayor, members of the council, and this follows on Councilmember Kazachik's point as well, is that the mayor and council gave direction at today's study session about actions going forward. And specifically, the mayor and council approved a motion that directed the manager to launch a community engagement process to evaluate any proposed expansions or revisions to the Central Business District, and any revisions to the mayor and council's G-plate policies going forward. That public engagement process was directed to include continuous direction and participation from the mayor and council as well as the city managers' office and economic initiatives staff. And will include a series of public meetings, including the use of a facilitator to lead those meetings. And specifically, as part of the discussion during that community engagement process, in the motion included, that that discussion with the community will include a discussion of the integration of additional elements into the G-plate process going forward, such as the use of health impact assessments, equity assessments, how to incentivize affordable housing, neighborhood scale, job creation, business incubators, and worker-owned cooperatives, how to accomplish that through your G-plate process going forward. So, as was already mentioned, the action tonight under this resolution is to renew the boundaries of the district as previously approved back in 2012, but to engage in that community-public process going forward on all those other issues.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Councilmember Santa Cruz, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just, you know, want to acknowledge that neighbors have raised concerns about increased housing costs and displacement, and the impacts of the G-plate projects, and by extension, the Central Business District. I know that at this moment, when it comes to the residential G-plates that have been approved, have been mostly been high-end housing, they have made high-end housing profitable and increased upward pressure on other-
Councilmember, I think you're muted.
Well, somebody muted me because I didn't mute myself. So, thank you. So, that at this point, the residential G-plates that have been approved just have made high-end housing profitable and increased upward pressure on other rents, and that I actually don't believe that all development is good or should, you know, have this incentive, nor should developers feel entitled to getting a G-plate. I do want the opportunity to dialogue with our barrios, our small businesses, potential small local developers on a vision for what a more just, democratic, sustainable future looks like. For me personally, and being pro-people, I feel like we need to be responsive to the historic disinvestment and direct incentives to the communities that have been traditionally left out. I do not believe that our barrios are slums. At this moment, I will vote with the renewal, but only to push for mayor and council in collaboration with community stakeholders that we continue to work on retooling the Central Business District and the G-plate. I know that right now, G-plates are the only economic option, incentive that we have, but they need to be used to serve the needs of our people, of our communities, and not corporate profit margins. So, if we close the door on this option, there's nothing available, and we need to be really intentional and lead with community input and direction. We need, you know, community engagement process, like we talked earlier at the study session, that works towards a more comprehensive, just economic, you know, development strategy that helps us to better track the community benefits and the social and economic impacts that are inclusive of all our Tucsonans. And also, just finally, to like make clear that in the interim, I know that I will not be giving my blessing for G-plates in Ward One that don't align with the needs and values of our barrios. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. Santa Cruz, I absolutely 100% agree with your comments. I've said myself that it's important that we keep this tool in our toolbox, but that we review and reimagine how we, the process as we move forward for G-plates. It should not be assumed that it is a given. There has to be community engagement with the barrios and stakeholders surrounding the project before the application process even starts. And there needs to be a return on investment for community values. There have been examples given throughout the night and in our conversations regarding investing in affordable housing, making sure that there are transit passes available to those living in a particular development. There has to be additional value that is brought to the table for the incentive given by the City of Tucson. I think that we're going to have a very good dialogue and conversation as we move forward. I believe that it is an opportunity that we have in front of us that we could reimagine even other incentives for small businesses and micro businesses, other ways of investing in our city, and that we still can make sure that we move the value of development quality, transit-oriented development in our urban core, so that we could see continued investment in our community and bringing along community with us. So, with that, I don't know if there are any additional comments, but there is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Vice Mayor? Nope? Okay. So, there's a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, let's go to a roll call.
Well, I guess, so what's the difference between this vote and what we did this afternoon? That was kind of the intent of my question for Mike Rankin.
The afternoon vote was giving direction to the city manager and the Economic Incentives Office on how to proceed with the process for community engagement and, you know, for the expansion of the map and how we want to proceed with the conversation on G-plate. This particular motion is for the renewal of the Central Business District.
But it subsumes the earlier conversation. That was my question.
Yes, it does, but it's the required action with the adoption of the resolution to preserve the existing district.
Got it.
So, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Kazachik?
No.
Mixon the Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor O'Meara?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Motion passes for one. Resolution 23246 passes by a vote of 4-1. Item 14?
We've completed item 14, Your Honor.
Oh, that's, thank you. That was the financial update. Item 15?
Adjournment.
Council will stand adjourned. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Tuesday, October 6th, at 5:30 PM. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a wonderful rest of your week, and thank you all for your service.
Hi, everyone.
I think you-